What's that? Never sounded better. Never sounded better.
I'd like to call to order the Monday, March 1st meeting of the Currituck County Board of Commissioners. At 6:30, we had a work session with our code enforcement officers to discuss the corridor sweep. And at this time, I'd like to ask Brother Dennis McCrea from the Jarvisburg Church of Christ to lead us in the invocation and the pledge of allegiance.
Let's pray. Dear Lord, we thank you for this day, and we give you praise and honor that we've had good health to go through this day, dear God, and accomplish your purpose. And, Lord, we ask the same tonight, that these representatives who have been elected by the people are serving us well, dear God, and we thank you for their service. But, Lord, we also pray that as they have taken on this task, a noble task, one that is given by you to rule over people, that they have dwelt in your word, Lord, that they have asked for your wisdom, because that's what true wisdom is, it's from God to the people. And, Lord, we just pray that that wisdom will be used tonight. We live in a wonderful time, but we live in difficult times. Dear God, we live in a time where we need your blessings, dear God, and we need to return to you that those blessings that have been with us for 200 years or more would just be bestowed upon us, dear Lord. So it's time for us, each individual, to take personal stock of our lives and see how it just matches up with your loving word. Lord, you have our best interest at heart. You have the way. Jesus is the way, the truth, and the light. So we thank you for this day. I pray for the blessings of this meeting and that your wisdom would be used in all things. Bless our county, dear God. Bless us with jobs, Lord. Bless us with the renewed zeal that we have to serve you and love you. And thank you for the time to meet tonight. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item 1 is approval of agenda. I have no additions or deletions, so I need a motion from the board for approval.
So moved.
I have a motion from Commissioner Etheridge, a second from Commissioner Taylor. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Item 2 is public comment. We have three people that have signed up for the public comment. If we can call Ms. Tracy Hale first. Ask you to please, or Mr. Tracy Hale, sorry. Ask you to please restate your name and address for the record.
My name is Tracy Hale. My address is 130 Rita Street in Jarvisburg. And I'd like to make a comment tonight on item 16, line 4, for the petition to the North Carolina Department of Transportation to maintain Rita Street, Neal Street, and Parker Street. These are the main accesses back into our subdivision. And over the past 15 years, we've tried to maintain these roads the best that we could, but they have gotten in such bad shape now that we don't have the means, the resources, nor the money to maintain those roads any longer. It's really bad on our vehicles. We've had several of you department heads come back and look at the place. My main concern is fire and EMS services. The road, like I say, is so bad from having trucks, propane trucks, fuel trucks, trash trucks. The ground's so soft that we have holes in the road, approximately 100 square foot in a lot of places, and then plus they're standing water. We're in dire need of some help back there, or some resources to come to a solution on how we can fix this problem. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Gene Staples. May she also restate your name and address for the record.
My name is Gene Staples. I live at 103 Neal Avenue in Jarvisburg. And I've made a few notes. Basically, I'm echoing just what Mr. Hale just said. For those of us homeowners living from Colonial Beach Road to Neal Avenue, our close proximity to the Albemarle Sound Beachfront requires most, if not all, of us to pay higher than average property taxes. Yet our access to those properties is limited to roads that resemble nothing so much as a rough dirt motocross track, in places little more than a string of ponds bordered by swamps that in rainy weather like that of recent months runs in streams across the roads. Many cars, most regular cars, actually will scrape bottom in navigating this muddy rollercoaster, to the point that our family members and friends, not to mention the services that Mr. Hale brought up, are reluctant to come visit. And we haven't seen a deputy patrol our neighborhood in months. We've been told that nothing can be done to help us, that we're on our own and must help ourselves. It's been suggested that we should form a homeowners' association. There are numerous factors that would make that impractical and ineffective, if not impossible. It's an old, established neighborhood where such an association would have no authority to require membership. Many who might benefit from such an association lack the means to spare for dues sufficient to fund the needed level of maintenance. Our neighborhood is sparsely populated, largely by retired senior citizens, or as in my case, working-class couples with children. Most of the remaining residents are renters whose absentee landlords rarely if ever visit their properties and couldn't care less about the condition of the roads as long as they collect their rent. The majority of the lots bordering the roads in question will most likely remain, as they are now, swampy, wooded, and undeveloped for some time to come because they're so small, being on average 100 feet by 40 feet, that I believe the current setback requirements don't allow anyone to build on the single lots. So owners of these lots, some of them no doubt out of state, may have planned to build at some future time, but now cannot without acquiring at least one adjacent lot, and so would be unlikely to help form or join any homeowners' association that would benefit them but little. Road improvements, on the other hand, might encourage some to build homes in Albemarle Sound Beach Estates, thereby bringing some increased revenue to Currituck. Therefore, we desperately plead with our county if they cannot offer us any material assistance themselves, to at least use whatever influence they might have in encouraging the state to invest in the future and fix our roads. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Ben, those roads back there, are they private or are they dedicated to the public? Do they meet the requirements for the state to take them over?
I don't know offhand, I haven't looked at the file, but they are most likely private, but they're most likely dedicated for public use. I'll need to verify that. And I think it'd be probably, I don't know that the state's going to accept those. The state's generally looking for roads that are up to their standards when they accept them, so they're going to look probably for paved roads with, free of potholes, with proper drainage on the sides of the roads. So that may be a difficult challenge to get those accepted.
I traveled down there last week, and it's atrocious. I mean, some of the roads, you can't get a car through some of the side roads down there. I don't, I just don't know. I went to see a lady who's, she's underwater, her entire house, everything is underwater. It's, that whole, we talked about these roads before, I think the previous board has, and over the years. And if they're private-owned, doesn't the owner have any responsibility to the roads?
Typically, you have regional developers who may still retain title, if you were to do a title search of the street, subject to their public dedication and the public's right to use them. But that would be a question as to whether there still is a developer in existence, whether it be corporate or individual, and then what responsibility they may still have.
Mr. McCrea, couldn't we set up a service district similar to what we did at Corova Beach?
You do have the authority to set up a service district similar to that, but you did it at Corova Beach, that's correct.
I think if we got together with the, all of the people that live back there, that we at least would consider that, because that's the alternative. The county does not build roads. The state of North Carolina, I don't think, is going to build any, or pave any roads in this county anytime soon. And I think it is a dire situation, and the reasons that have been expressed here this afternoon are exactly the same that were expressed by the citizens of Corova Beach, that it's a necessity for fire safety and that we could establish a service district and thereby help out the community.
Yeah, could, we've got another person who wants to speak to this, but could you not, staff, make themselves available to meet with some of these folks on a given day?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, if the board acts on the petition tonight and you favorably approve it, NC DOT will come out and do a site assessment, and they will provide you back a report.
Right.
Letting you know.
What has to be done.
If there's deficiencies, a list of that deficiencies, whether it's title, whether it's right-of-way, whether it's the degree of the conditions of the road. By passing it tonight, we'll start the process of an investigation.
Okay. We'll move on to next. We have Barbara Zotto.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm the one that sent the letters out. I had called the county and.
Please restate your name and address, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Barbara Otto. I live at 110 Neal Avenue. I've lived in Albemarle Sound Estates for 10 years. Now, some of the folks have lived here, of course, much longer than I, but I'm all the way down, back on the water practically to the end of Neal Avenue, so I've got about as far as you can go back in there. Started for me last month when I got a call from the propane company that told me they could not deliver me propane because the truck got stuck. Fortunately, it didn't rain for a while. It froze, got very hard, so he was able to come, so at least we didn't freeze to death. Now, I live back there by myself, and I'm very happy there. I'm a widow. I don't go a lot, I don't do a lot, so this is not the problem. It's just the fact that in an emergency, we really need some help. So I called the county, and the man came out, and I ran and raved and carried on, and he was so kind, so kind to me, let me just go on and on, and then that's when he said, "Well, we understand, but we don't do roads. The state does." But he's the one that got me started with the letters. I sent the letters out to everybody. I even enclosed self-addressed stamped envelopes, so they didn't have to put it aside, so they could, and that, when I got the majority, is when I brought the letters to you. And I thank you very much for considering it, because we really, really do need your help. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. So I guess we'll proceed with the request to DOT, and then when it comes back, then we can set a meeting with some of the folks and try to find a way to address this. It's a difficult issue, I will tell you that. That's all I have, signed up for public comment. Does any commissioners have any comments?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make one comment and thank all of the people in Currituck County that helped in a dire emergency this week. As some of you may know, we had a school teacher who, the house she was living in was burnt down. She was saved by the grace of God. She came by my house and talked to me, and she and her daughter, her daughter had gotten sick and started coughing, and she took her to pharmacy to get some cough medicine, and while she was there, she got a call that her house was in flame. But through the efforts of Sheriff Johnson, and particularly, I want to thank Dominion NC Power, who with us allowed us to find a place for her to live, and Dennis McCord was gracious enough to leave Bell's Island and come on and cut on the electricity so that she has a place to stay. But it was a testament to the good people that there are in Currituck County, and these are the stories that don't get in the news, but everybody that contributed. The lady told me that even while the house was totally in flames, one of the firefighters from the Lower Currituck Volunteer Fire Department was already seeking furniture for her to find a new place to live. And I want to thank the Lower Currituck Volunteer Fire Department for all they did to try to save, but unfortunately, the woman lost everything.
Thank you, sir. And I'm sure she could still use some help.
Yeah, yes, she could. There's Lynn Gray teaches school with her. The teacher teaches at Griggs Elementary School and Jarvisburg Elementary School. She has two daughters, one in college and one that was living with her. And I think anything, but she was just overwhelmed the day after it happened with the response from the citizens here, that, everybody from the firemen, right on down, and especially Mr. McCord, because I talked to Dominion Power for, and it's next to impossible to get current cut on on the weekend, but Dennis left his home in Bell's Island and came down and did it the next morning, very, very graciously. I want to commend Dennis, so this is not the first time he's done something like that.
Thank you. Any other commissioners? Hearing none, I'm going to close the public here, public comment. Item 3 is a proclamation for Girl Scout Week. The Girl Scouts couldn't make it tonight, but we have Ms. Elizabeth Ferry, Community Relations Manager for the Girl Scout Council of Colonial Coast, so I'm going to ask her to come up to the podium.
Last time the Girl Scouts came, they brought us a box of cookies.
They're still selling, so you can still go.
And I've been eating mine, in case you can't tell. Whereas, March 12th marks the 98th anniversary of Girl Scouts of the USA, founded by Juliette Gordon in 1912 in Savannah, Georgia. And whereas throughout its distinguished history, Girl scouting has inspired millions of girls and women with the highest ideals of courage, confidence, and character. And whereas, through the Girl Scout leadership experience, girls develop the skills and lessons that will serve them a lifetime so that they may contribute to their communities. And whereas, Girl scouting takes an active role in increasing girls' awareness of the opportunities available to them today in math, science, sports, technology, and other fields that can expand their horizons. And whereas, more than 3 million current Girl Scout members nationwide will be celebrating 98 years of this American tradition, with nearly 50 million women who are former Girl Scouts and living proof of the impact of this amazing movement. For the Board of Commissioners of Currituck County, North Carolina, does hereby applaud the commitment Girl scouting has made to support the leadership development of America's Girls and proudly proclaims the week of March 7th, 2010, as Girl Scout Week, adopted this first day of March, 2010, S. Paul O'Neill, Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Item 4, public hearing and action on PBO 9-15 A1 towing. Request for a special use permit to operate a towing company impound lot at 1221 Ponton Lane in Corolla, tax map 114, parcel 3M, Papa Ranch Township. This is a special use permit, so anyone that wishes to speak in favor of or in opposition to, you have to come forward now and be sworn in. We're going to do one swearing in, so if you're speaking for or against, you have to come forward now to be sworn in. How many Bibles do we have up there? Three?
What class?
Yeah. I tell you what, I can swear in twice. So as many of you as can get up there now, place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand. Okay? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you, God? You're now sworn. Is there another group, or did we get everybody?
I think we got us.
Okay. This time, Mr. McCrea, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. As you consider the special use permit, the board sits as a quasi-judicial body, much like a court of law, in that you must make certain findings of fact in order to determine whether the special use permit conforms with your ordinance and should be issued. This also is an important, different type of hearing than your typical legislative zoning matter, in that the applicant is afforded certain rights of due process, which includes, among other things, that any evidence considered by this board is, as our courts have said, competent material and substantive evidence. And it's probably easier to say what that is not than what it is. Substantive material and competent evidence is not a mere speculation, conjecture, or generalized fear, again, as our court has said, but is testimony that is not hearsay but may be relied upon you from the actual knowledge of that person which may be testifying to you or presenting evidence to you. If documentary type of evidence, it's evidence that you might find is sufficiently reliable that you may base a finding of fact upon that particular piece of evidence. In addition, other due process rights that are afforded an applicant are the rights to examine and cross-examine witnesses and to present rebuttal evidence during the course of the hearing. So with that having been said, the hearing is now opened, and Mr. Woody will present the staff's comments to begin the hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney. This is a special use permit for the A1 towing facility. I'll try to go through this as quickly as I can. The site, and you can see on the aerial photograph there, is located off Ponton Lane, which is on the west side of NC 12. You can see Coral Lane, which is the entrance to the Ocean Hill 1 subdivision. And of course, the A1 towing site is actually included in the villages at Ocean Hill subdivision, which is one of our planned unit developments. And what's before you tonight is a request for a special use permit to allow A1 towing to operate as an impound lot, and they provide a, primarily provide services to the off-road area. They'll tow folks out when they're stuck, and they'll also take cars that are inoperable and move those from the beach down to this facility in the villages at Ocean Hill. And additionally, what you're going to have before you tonight is a revision to the zoning map, and what I mean by that is they're actually shifting some general business zoning around, and that's to get the commercial zoning off of the county's well site. So the county also has a well site back there. There's a number of things that are kind of going on here. So, and to kind of get you started, let me show you a site plan here. This is going to be hard to see on the monitor there, but basically, A1 towing is located towards the rear of this site, and right now, to get back to the A1 towing site, and that includes A1 towing, it includes the wastewater treatment plant operator, Mr. Freed with EnviroTech, it includes Buddy Ponton, who lives back here, and of course, it includes the county, as we have a well site and a building on that site. All four of those entities right now have to get back here to this part of villages at Ocean Hill for various reasons. And you can see on the site here, the shaded lane there, drive is Ponton Lane, and that kind of meanders back to where A1 towing is. You'll see a variety of entryways that connect to Ponton Lane, and I'll go over those in a second. That's a little more complicated. But real quickly, A1 towing is not a, not a new case for the Board of Commissioners. It actually, this property first came to the Board of Commissioners in 1999, at which point an S U P was approved to allow for the storage of stockpiled materials, sand, gravel, mulch, things like that. That was given a three-year permit duration. Later, in 2001, we actually had another permit that came, which was the A1 towing permit. So A1 towing was actually first permitted back there for a towing impound lot in 2001. That was given a one-year permit duration. Then, in 2002, you had both those permits come back, and they were kind of rolled into one, and basically, in 2002, the board reissued a special use permit for A1 towing and for the stockpiling of materials. That was given a three-year duration. So in 2005, the S U P's expired back here in the villages at Ocean Hill. We have documentation that shows in 2005, Mr. Bickford, the property owner, did apply for a S U P renewal, but for whatever reason, it never moved forward to the Board of Commissioners. So basically, in 2005, the permits expired, they didn't come back before the board for renewal, so effectively, you've had these uses back there for, at this point, nearly five years without a special use permit. Once staff became aware of this, of course, we've pushed, because obviously, our policy is that if your use requires a permit, you need to have that issued, so we've kind of pushed the issue, and here it is before you tonight, almost five years later. One thing that's going to be, actually, let me show you this. One thing that you're going to keep in mind, you're going to hear a lot about tonight, is access to the property. I do want to say that in the original permit that was issued for A1 towing, there was a condition that the access be taken from a point 550 feet north from the Coral Lane stub. And I want to get into that more in a second, but what's happened since that time is the access has been taken from other points. And another thing, and I'll go ahead and get into that, actually. And you can see on this map here, and the access was an issue back in 2099 and 2001, presumably, it would have been an issue in 2005, but effectively, on that map, you can see stub, which is what the applicant is proposing tonight for access. You can see the middle note there that says illegal access. That's actually a constructed access that's just north of Coral Landscape and where the A1 towing sign is located, and where most of the folks probably drive into the property at. Then you see the yellow bar on the north part of the map. That yellow bar is an easement located 550 feet north of the Coral Lane stub. That's actually where an easement was recorded, where the access should have been approved in 1999. My understanding is that it was built in the wrong location, so where you see illegal access is where the contractors actually built it, where they should have built it is where the yellow line is. One thing that complicates the access issue on this is now, where the yellow line is, you have wet ones on that property. So you've got a permitting issue today with building an access point there. Of course, illegal access is illegal because no easement is there, so what that does, it leaves A1 towing with the option, at this point, of requesting access from the Coral Lane stub, and you'll hear more testimony about that shortly. I do want to go back to some of the other issues on this. One thing we talked about is, and you can see on that map, the circle is the county well site. Traditionally, A1 towing S U P has been located on the county's well site. We have requested that now that they need to renew their S U P, that they remove their operations from the county's property and reroute the easement to stay out of the county's well site. So what this proposal before you tonight does, from the county's perspective, is it removes the towing operation and the access road from our property, from our well site. And of course, what that does, it shrinks the size of the A1 towing site, and you can see in the red kind of dash line what would be the proposed, that's what you're considering tonight for their S U P. Another component of this is, is the areas that you see highlighted in green, those are currently zoned for general business. You can see a lot of that green is located in the county's well site and adjacent to the Ponton Lane access easement. What they're proposing you do is move that G B to other sites on Mr. Bickford's property. There's no net increase in G B. Basically, when you started this, you had 31,913 square feet of G B zoning. If it's approved, the modification to the zoning, you'll still have 31,913 square feet of G B zoning, so there's no change in the zoning, actually. It's kind of confusing, what they're doing is they're moving the zoning off of the county's property and out from around the property, and to other portions of Mr. Bickford's site that are not encumbered as disposal area for the wastewater treatment plant. So I won't belabor that. That's just a kind of a push, if you will. And I do want to get into one more thing. One thing the planning department did when we moved this forward is we knew the need of the S U P to continue to operate, so we requested that Mr. Bickford and Larry Weaver produce documentation, and that's our one unresolved staff comment, produce some sort of documentation that legal access is available to the site. They have sent us a letter from their attorney that says they do have the right to access Coral Lane for A1 towing, and I think the other side will have some testimony on their feelings on that, because again, Coral Lane is a street right-of-way that's included in the Ocean Hill 1 subdivision, and Ocean Hill 1, actually, it is a public, it is a street dedicated for public use, but Ocean Hill 1 was deed to the streets in the mid-'90s, I believe. Findings a factor in your staff report, I'm not going to go over those, and what I do want to do is go through the staff recommendations before I end my presentation. Again, what staff's recommended for this is we have recommended conditional approval of the A1 towing special use permit, and we've asked that we be presented with information, or the board be presented with information by the applicant that establishes Coral Lane as legal access. We've asked that any disturbance or land grading activities they do back there have no impact on wetlands. We've also asked that A-1 towing provide, if it's approved, buffers in stormwater swells to help, because the property to the west of this is fish and wildlife property, so we wanna keep some buffers between that. Asked that the landscaping be installed according to the UDO. We've asked that if any lighting is installed, it meet the requirements of the UDO. We've asked that no hazardous waste material be stored on the A-1 towing site. The SUP is limited to a towing operation, an impound lot. We've also asked that, should the Board approve a special use permit, that revised site plan be submitted for review. We'd like for the kinda the technical review committee to take one more look at this before we finally approve it. And the last thing I'll note about this, from staff's perspective, is a lot of issues here in the Board, you do have the liberty, if you do decide to grant the special use permit, you can grant it for a duration. What that means is, you don't have to grant it indefinitely tonight, you could assign conditions to the permit and grant the permit for six months, for one year, whatever you see fit, if you'd like to see some issues worked out, and then this brought back before you. So you do have that liberty as a Board. Planning Board did hear this at their February meeting, and they did recommend approval of the special use permit, the staff conditions. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you have, or show any of the slides or photographs you'd like to see.
Members of the Board have any questions for Mr. Woody?
I have one. Mr. Ponton's dedicated access to his property is what?
Mr. Ponton's access is... His dedicated easement access does terminate at the Coral Lane stub. So Mr. Ponton certainly has a right to use Coral Lane to get back to his property through his easement.
Any other questions from the Board at this time?
I have a question. I was on the Board in '99 and 2000 and 2001 and 2005. How in... How the agreed-to easement that's in yellow, how did that become wetlands? Because it was not wetlands when we approved that back in 2001.
My understanding is, and this is somewhat conjecture, but my understanding is that some of the adjacent property owners may have modified drainage patterns in there and cause water to back up into some of those areas.
Can you do that?
You probably shouldn't, no. Well, actually, you definitely shouldn't do that, no.
Well, is that easement still available, except for the wetlands?
Yes, sir, it is available.
Is there not mitigations that could be done to use it?
There are mitigations. But I think there are steps that can be taken to get that platted easement improved. There's some complexity that exists on that property that I think perhaps Mr. Bissell would be better suited to speak to, but I think it can be done, yes.
Okay. No further questions.
Any further questions for Mr. Woody? If not, is the applicant Mid-Atlantic LLC president, and are there any questions for staff at this point?
I have no questions.
If not, then Mid-Atlantic, as the applicant, may present their case. If you'll please state your name.
I'm Mark Bissell. I'm a professional engineer, and I represent Mid-Atlantic Builders, as well as Larry Weaver of A-1 Towing.
I am Jim Bickford. I live at 4143 North Virginia Dare Trail in Kitty Hawk. I represent Mid-Atlantic Builders LLC.
You may present your case.
Well, this has been a long and involved process, and with the help of many people, and especially the Currituck Planning and Development Staff, and Mr. Woody in particular, we've been able to resolve, I believe, all of the issues that have come forward, with the exception of the access issue. And as been stated, the access issue is a difficult issue, and for a number of reasons. First, after the original special use permit was issued, the developer contracted to put in the access road that was required by the permit. That's Mr. Bickford I'm talking about. And unfortunately, the contractor who did the work built the access road about 200 feet away from where it was supposed to be, and nobody even noticed that for some time, and that access road was in a convenient location, and people began to use it, and... But like I said, it wasn't in the right location. It wasn't in the permit designated location. Subsequently, the Corps of Engineers issued a notice of violation regarding alleged wetlands within the recorded 30-foot easement. The property owner, who owns the land that the easement goes across, disagreed that there'd been a violation, and we believe that that agreement was rightly so. That disagreement was correct, that there hadn't been a violation, because the... Because there was an agreement with the Corps of Engineers back in 1987 that called... There was a specific written agreement that called for those areas that were within that easement to be part of an area that was designated for fill. The Corps of Engineers disagreed. There were a number of meetings that took place with the Corps between environmental consultants, attorneys, representative of the Justice Department, and the issue remains We don't see it being resolved in the foreseeable future, and quite possibly, it could only be resolved through litigation with the Corps of Engineers. That is why it is difficult to, at this point, to commit to improving that right-of-way, or that 30-foot easement. It's a very complex matter, and it may... It could take years. In fact, it's been going on for at least three years already. The property owner, across whose property the incorrect access was constructed, has graciously allowed the continued use of the access by all of the affected parties. However, as was stated, there's no easement there, and there probably will not be an easement granted in this location, because an access in this location would in all probability not tie into the future development of the property, for his future development plans for that property. It's not really in a good location for him. And there would only be, under the county rules, two curb cuts allowed for the frontage that's on that commercial property, and this would be one of them, and it would be a big sacrifice for that landowner. The applicant has primarily used, and would continue to primarily use, the improved access as long as it's available. But there needs to be a legal access in addition to the unrecorded access, so we're asking the Board's approval to utilize the historic access via Coral Lane as a legal access in connection with this permit. This access was dedicated to public use when the Ocean Hill Section 1 plat was put to record. It's been in continuous use for more than 20 years. It is still dedicated to the Pontons and others for ongoing use. It has sufficient width to provide the necessary access, meeting the UDO requirements, without impacting any wetlands. We have, in fact, recently done a survey there that shows that it's 23 feet wide at the narrowest point across Coral Lane, between the northern right-of-way and the wetland line. And it's really the only viable long-term solution for A-1 towing that we can see at this time. Again, the improved access to the north can and will be used as the primary access, as long as that property owner allows it. But we really need to ask for your help in allowing the use of Coral Lane as the legal access in connection with the permit. I'm glad to answer any questions.
Members of the Board have any questions for Mr. Bissell?
Just your testimony, Mark, is that you've been in court with the Corps of Engineers for three years over the platted easement?
It hasn't actually gone to court. A lawsuit has not been filed by either party at this point.
But you've been trying to negotiate with them for...
But there have been ongoing negotiations, meetings, and discussions, and posturing, and so forth, and the matter at this point is not any closer to being resolved.
Thank you.
Any further questions?
Just a quick clarification. Who owns Coral Lane?
You're asking me?
Anybody.
I will give you my opinion, which is that Coral Lane, the fee simple, ownership of the real property is owned by Ocean Hill 1 Property Owners Association, I believe is the proper name. That is subject, however, to the public's right to utilize those streets by virtue of the fact that the streets were dedicated to the public, and that dedication was accepted by the Board of Commissioners for Currituck County when it approved Ocean Hill 1 subdivision, and that plat went to record some years ago.
And Mr. Ponton uses that same access, correct?
From my review of some of the title circumstances related to this, I do see that Mr. Ponton has an easement that at least is deeded to him and abuts to the stub of Coral Lane.
Okay. Mr. Bickford, anything that you'd like to present to the Board?
I'd just like to make one minor clarification. The in-between time when the original permit expired, and the problem that happened is then, is that the land, the circle that represents the well site that the county was given in trade for the water system, was overlaid, the original permit. The county, as you could see even up till today, did not really want that to take place, because they would've had to been a signature on the application, and it didn't seem to make sense. The conveyance agreement that said that implied we could continue to use it here until such time as it actually became a well site, but the fact that it was owned by the county complicated that. And so we've been kinda letting it sit and thinking about how to work it out over the years, and it's never been... It always keeps coming up, and finally, we've now fully addressed all the issues that were involved in it, and that's what made it such a long process.
Any questions for Mr. Bickford?
None, but I do have one question for you. The end of Coral Lane on the west side of the road, is that where it should be? You said it abuts the end of Coral Lane on the east side.
No, the easement I was speaking of abuts Coral Lane stub on the west side.
But it did not line up.
If you mean the actual dirt path, is it appears from the aerial photo? I do not know whether that dirt path that appears on the aerial photograph is actually within the conveyed easement area.
All right. If there's nothing else for the applicant to present at this time, and no further questions from the Board for the applicant, then we'll begin to hear from other persons who have expressed an interest in presenting testimony to the Board. Tom Nash.
If you please, again, state your name and address for the record.
I sure will. My name's Tom Nash, and I am a resident of Pashtun County, 117 Nickson Loop Road. And I'm here this evening in behalf of Ocean Hill 1 Property Owners Association, as well as individual property owners in Ocean Hill Section 1. I have a handout, if I may. Mr. Woody's summation of the history of this special use permit, I think, was very good. I think it's important to note that the March 12, 2001, application and requirements stated specifically, and I'm gonna quote the minutes, "The entrance to the property is located on the west side of NC-12," and that's Ocean Trail, "approximately 550 feet north of the intersection with Coral Lane in the commercial area within the villages at Ocean Hill PUD." That would be the yellow line, as pointed out by Mr. Woody. And that was the agreement and the condition of the original, as I understand it, as reading the minutes of the original special use permit. And he is also correct, as Mr. Bickford has acknowledged, that from approximately September of 2005 to April 1 of 2009, apparently, A-1 operated without a permit. Now, I wanna make one thing clear to this Board. My client and clients are not here to prevent A-1 towing from having its business. We feel like it's a necessary business, and they do a good job. We are here for the sole purpose of contesting the use of Coral Lane as the access point for the business and for the special use permit. Now, just to give you a little bit of history on Ocean Hill 1, the... Ocean Hill 1 was deeded this property, all of the streets in Ocean Hill 1, by Mr. Friedman. And that deed conveyed, it was a quitclaim deed, and it conveyed the property to Ocean Hill 1 Property Owners Association in 1993. And since that time, the roads in Ocean Hill, including Coral Lane, have been maintained by the Ocean Hill 1 Property Owners Association. And you just heard a wonderful statement from the people who spoke during the public comments, and the problems that they are having with the very same situation that Ocean Hill 1 has and has been having. And that is, you got dedicated to public use, but you got the DOT coming in and saying, "Well, it'll cost $200,000 to fix these roads up, and we're not gonna do it. You'll have to bring them to that point before we'll ever take them over." So as a result, Ocean Hill 1 has owned and maintained those roads since they were deeded, the roads, back in 1993. Now, we have some pictures, and if you could bring up the number 17. I'm sorry. Okay. What this shows you is, again, what you've basically, Mr. Woody has already shown you, is where that sign for A-1 towing is currently located. And if you will also bring up 18. If you look in almost in the middle of this picture, you will see the A-1 sign. It's in the distance, it's very small. And then if you bring up 19, this is the actual access that has been indicated to you Was put in allegedly by mistake. And then also 20, there's the A-1 sign. So this is actually an improved access, which A-1 has been utilizing, as Mr. Bissell indicated... So this is actually an improved access, which A-1 has been utilizing, as Mr. Bissell indicated, the majority of the time. And then number 21. This is the actual existing access, again, allegedly put in by mistake, wrong place, but you can see, obviously, it is somewhat improved with gravel. Now, to take you back to Coral Lane, Coral Lane at this point is unimproved, and we would frankly dispute the width of that road as it currently exists. There was a bike path survey that was done as a part of the bike path, trying to get the bike path in in Corolla. And number two is a, shows where that bike path will be located, and it also shows the survey itself, with number three actually being a close-up of the survey. And you see there that there is actually, they would anticipate putting in a wooden bridge, if you see that, and he is pointing to it now. But the reason I show you this is that there are wetlands there, right there at the Coral Lane stub. And we would, in number four, show you the path that currently exists for the Coral Lane stub, and that's basically all it is, is a path. In number five, we have outlined for you what we believe to be the wetlands. Ocean Hill One Property Owners Association did not feel for that, for the continuation of that stub, somebody else did. And we actually have, at this point, a meeting set up with the Corps of Engineers on March the 10th to determine exactly, to get their determination as to what wetlands exist there. Number six would show how the water flows, and it flows coming off of the east side of Coral Lane, out and around, as you see those arrows. There is definitely a problem with the water and the wetlands. Number six, let's see, no, number seven, is a picture of what that stub looks like from across from the east side. We're looking west, and just behind the stop sign is the stub for Coral Lane. The, number eight would show you kind of the stub itself, but then number nine shows you how it narrows down to 16 feet, and I'm talking about the stub now. And if you would go to number 12, this is, this would be the wetlands to the south of that stub. And then number 13 is two people showing you the width of that stub at that point. And we have a further picture that shows that the tape is actually 16 feet. There it is. But my point is, is that we feel like that there are wetlands on the north of this stub, there are wetlands on the south, we didn't fill them in, and that is problematic with the use of this particular stub for commercial traffic. And so we wanted you to have a good picture of what we feel is currently existing. Now, I have handed out to you a letter that is addressed to Ike McCray from Mike Bro. You may, some of you may know that Mr. Bro is an attorney in Chapel Hill. He's well-known as being somewhat of an expert on zoning. And the, in his letter, he makes certain points which we feel are very important to the, to this particular situation. The first is that he states in that first paragraph at the end that Coral Lane cannot be paved or improved without the Property Owner Association's consent, and that it cannot be used as an access drive to serve commercial uses so long as it remains zoned residential. His point being that that road and all of Ocean Hill One is zoned residential, and to then require that road to be utilized for commercial use, in his opinion, would be against the zoning that currently exists. Secondly, he cites a judgment that was handed down by Judge Richard Parker, Judge Parker, Dick Parker, in a most recent case. And down at the bottom of the page, Judge Parker made certain findings. Now, this is a Superior Court case, and he found that Ocean Hill One Property Owners Association holds title to the roads and road wideways within the Ocean Hill One subdivision, and then not part of the North Carolina road system. Two, Ocean Hill One currently has responsibility for road operation and maintenance within Ocean Hill One subdivision, and thus has the authority to grant an easement affecting the roads with the Ocean Hill One subdivision. Then on the next page, and most importantly, Ocean Hill One, as owners of the road therein, shall have the right to use and maintain the roads and beach accesses within Ocean Hill One subdivision in the condition Ocean Hill One deems appropriate. So we would argue that Ocean Hill One is the owner of the property, does have the right to control the use and maintenance of the road. It cannot stop Mr. Ponton from coming and using that road. We're not here to tell you that. But we feel like that it does have the right to determine what improvements are made to the road. And we further feel that because of the problem that we have with the flooding, that the best use of Coral Lane is frankly for stormwater drainage. So we are here, again, we don't necessarily want A-1 not to be able to operate. We do. We feel like they should operate where they originally agreed and have the access that they originally agreed to, and should be on them to find appropriate access other than Coral Lane stub. The predominant use in the past has, of course, been the, quote, "illegal access," but as Mr. Woody said, that in his opinion, certainly they could move forward to obtain the platted easement access. The current degree of improvement of Coral Lane is definitely problematic. It's less than 16 feet wide, with a drop on either side to wetlands. There are no guardrails. And who's going to be liable when there's a problem? Ocean Hill One Property Owners Association. They own the roads, they insure the roads. And so with, my clients are the ones that will have to deal with problems. Again, we do have a meeting with the Corps of Engineers. We feel that, again, if in passing this type of SUP, the county is almost encouraging the commercial use, which again increases the association's liability. You have in front of you Mike Bro's opinion that the Coral Lane stub cannot be paved or improved without the Homeowners Association approval. The court has acknowledged, or at least in certain findings in Superior Court, that the Homeowners Association is the sole determiner of the configuration of the roads. We feel that the best use of Coral Lane at this point is for stormwater management, and the wetlands on the stub are an important part of the stormwater management as you come out of the east side of Coral Lane, because that's how it flows. We think that any improvement to the stub, Coral Lane stub, should be or require approval of Ocean Hill One Property Owners Association and the Corps of Engineers. And we feel that the best use of the stub is the continued use in its current form. So, to summarize again, we don't necessarily want A-1 towing not to operate. We do. We're not here for that. But Coral Lane is problematic, and we feel that as owners, my clients feel that, as owners, they have a right to determine who improves it, and they are the ones that are liable for anything that is done. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. I'd be happy to try to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions for Mr. Nash?
Mr. Nash, what do you foresee as the problems in using the platted easement and the Corps of Engineers? Because the Corps of Engineers and the testimony so far we've heard is the stumbling block. Am I correct, Mr. McCray?
I think that's what Mr. Woody.
What Mr. Woody testified. And as an attorney that's familiar with this, and I'm just interested in your thoughts on the availability and possibility of getting the platted easement that was originally the way it was supposed to be effected.
Well, as Mr. Woody stated, there are ways to mitigate loss of wetlands. But I must be totally honest, Mr. Nils, I do not have all of the facts involving that particular easement. In other words, I don't, I have not talked to the Corps of Engineers to understand from them why they may have a problem with its use. So I cannot frankly speak to the specifics, other than as Mr. Woody has indicated, certainly I would like to see them take that matter to its conclusion. And again, this is what they indicated they would do in the original, or in the 2001 permit.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but your testimony has been that the same conditions exist on Coral Lane that exist on the unplatted eas, I mean, the platted easement. The issue is wetlands in both instances.
And also, in this particular case, it is that there has been, to our knowledge, there's never been a permit granted for the fill-in of Coral Lane. And so there may be a violation there as we speak.
Thank you, sir.
Yes.
Any other questions from board members from Mr. Nash?
I have one. I heard you say a couple times that you were not interested in putting A-1 out of business. Is there some way we could talk about alternatives or look at options and things to where it can create a win-win situation for everyone by time, having time limits or that type of stuff? Would your clients be interested in doing something like that?
Commissioner Hyatt, I have, my clients have indicated that certainly if there would be a temporary permit, a six-month, as Mr. Woody suggested, that would give perhaps both sides an opportunity to, number one, further explore the Corps of Engineers along the platted easement, and also to allow us to meet with the Corps of Engineers to find out what our situation is on Coral Lane.
Thank you. Any further questions for Mr. Nash?
I have a question, maybe better addressed to Mr. Woody, I'm not sure. I'm interested in the legal platted width of that Coral Lane stub. I mean, we've seen a tape that said 16 feet, and I think somebody mentioned 23 feet. It's got to have some legal definition.
The legal platted width of the Coral Lane stub is 60 feet.
Okay. Are there any known official wetlands delineations?
Not, to my knowledge. Obviously, the county would request a wetland delineation should somebody decide to develop property, but since this has never been developed, we've never requested a delineation, and as my knowledge, there's never been one performed.
Is that sheet flow across there part of a stormwater management plan of some sort?
Say that again.
The stormwater flow across that area that curves slightly to the north, is that part of some stormwater management plan, or is that just fact of nature, by the way it's been created?
I know that the Ocean Hill One subdivision did hire an engineer, Mr. Stewart, the late Mr. Stewart, to come in and perform some stormwater analysis for them, and they verified that Coral Street stub does perform some kind of stormwater function. Now, how it ended up that way, I'm not really sure. That may just be a result of how NC-12 was built, quite frankly, or it could be a variety of things. I'm not sure how it got to that point. Actually, I think I've heard Ms. Cole, Kaye Cole, one of the neighbors of the South, she may have a little more history on how that got to be the way it is. And I can't remember Ms. Cole, what you told me in the past, but you seem to have some knowledge of that.
She's going to actually speak to you.
You may be able to answer that a little better than I just did.
And just to, just to show this board, the people that are here and concerned, if the people that are from Ocean Hill One Property Owners Association tonight, that are here to speak against the use of Coral Lane, they are standing up.
Commissioner Gregory?
How far does the pavement go up Coral Lane?
On the west side, there is no pavement, to my knowledge.
Oh, it shows, there it shows pavement right there.
No, it's not.
It's compacted gravel or dirt, really.
Is that yellow line on dirt?
Yes, sir.
On the east side, on the right-hand side.
On the right-hand side?
That's going into Ocean Hill One.
Oh, yeah, that's on the east side, on the right-hand side.
That is paved.
I was just looking at the yellow line, you know, and was wondering if it was any pavement in there or not, I guess.
Not on the west side.
Not on the west side.
Mr. McCray?
Mr. Reth?
Mr. Nash, then, what, in your opinion, what we're here tonight is not to question the permit for A-1, but does Ocean Hill have the right to control who accesses that road?
We are here because we understand that as a part of the requested permit, A-1 wants to use Coral Lane for access purposes, and that's the reason that we're here. We do not feel that they should be able to use that for the reasons already stated.
Any further questions for Mr. Nash at this time?
I've got one question for Mr. Woody. The proposed illegal access that's up there, who owns that?
The Freedmans do, the on the land.
And is it possible that that could be made a platted and legal access if Mr. Bickford and Mr. Friedman could agree to that?
It is possible if they could agree to that.
If they could agree to it. I mean, the UDO would allow it.
Yes, the UDO would allow it, that's correct.
All right, if no further questions for Mr. Nash, then we'll proceed to the next individual.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Bickford, we'd like to, well, you have a chance for rebuttal. Do you have any questions you have for Mr. Nash?
Yes. Do you know, I think it's been made fairly clear that this actually has not been delineated for wetlands yet. Is that correct? Would you agree with that? There's no wetlands delineation that's officially conceived at the time.
For?
For this area.
The Coral Lane stub.
Coral Lane stub, correct.
To my knowledge, unless Kaye Cole knows, not to my knowledge.
Ms. Cole's open this. Did you, Mr. Bickford, again, ask Mr. Nash your questions?
Only insofar as the bike path. I believe we showed you that the bike path survey did in fact delineate, and I believe the bike path survey is.
It's right there. I can speak to that. The Rivers and Associates are a design engineer. They did go out there, identify, their environmental professionals identified the wetlands and state those. However, that has not been affirmed or signed by the Army Corps of Engineers. So we have an assessment by an environmental scientist, but we do not have a signed plat by the Corps of Engineers. by the Corps of Engineers.
The picture that you show that indicated it was only 16 feet wide, are you absolutely certain that picture was taken on the Coral Lane stub side of the street? Okay. I just want to make sure they measure the distance.
Let's please direct our comments to the commissioners who will be making the decision.
I would like to submit something as a plat that has been prepared that shows that we, in our testimony, we said we had 20-some feet. This confirms that. We use the same criteria that the county used to determine where the wetlands were. We measured it. It's a survey. It's preliminary, but it comes from field data.
Can you move that to the court? And do you have any further questions for Mr. Nash?
No, sir.
Okay.
I asked Mr. Bickford a question.
He will have the opportunity for rebuttal at the end of the other persons who wish to testify. Next on the list is Kaye Cole.
Can I ask Mr. Woody, could you share with the board the date on the plat?
Yes, sir. March 1st, 2010. Must have been this morning.
I'm Kaye Cole, and I reside at 1200 Ocean Trail, which is located adjacent on the south side of the Coral Lane stub. I've been there since 1983. Mr. Nils built my home. But the drainage ditch that is there was created by the villages of Ocean Hill when they developed. When I built my house, that was not the villages of Ocean Hill, it was to be future development of Ocean Hill One. So that drainage ditch was not there. It was created for a ditch to, you know, for rainwater runoff. And until we got so developed, we really didn't have the flooding that we do now. So that was not a problem. And wetlands, I'm not so sure they're really there, other than the drainage ditch. It's just, it does flood, but I don't think that's really necessarily wetlands. But I was here in 1999 and opposed this originally. And I didn't think that this property should be used as it is, and those of you that were here then remember John Schroed and myself fighting this because we didn't feel like it was right. The biggest problem was the stockpiling, and I don't know, is their permit still active?
The stockpiling permit is not active, and this particular quest does not include stockpiling.
Right. So that's another issue, you know, but they are still using it, I mean...
After tonight, that'll have to be cleaned up.
Okay. Because they're still bringing in modular homes there when they build up the beach. I mean, all kinds of stuff is in and out of there, and you saw some of the vehicles parked on the access that's not legal. So there's a lot of activity going on there. But I don't want to, in any way, have Mr. Weaver and A-1 Towing stopped. I did fight him in the beginning, like I told you before, but he has been a good neighbor, and we need him there. It is the service that is needed. But some of this other activity is not needed. And it was never intended for Coral Lane to have any commercial traffic. Like I said, that was to be the second phase of Ocean Hill One, when that was platted. And it was for residential use only. So that road is not, you know, I don't feel should be used that way. And Mr. Weaver is not a problem, and I would like to see him be able to continue until what they agreed to do is worked out. And I know wetlands can be relocated, and if that's what they have to do, I think that's what they need to do. But it needs to be addressed and done right, like they said they would do back in 2001. Thank you.
Any questions for Ms. Cole? If not, Alicia McDonald?
Good evening, gentlemen. My name is Alicia McDonald. I live at 965 Sunset Crescent in Corolla. I am a property owner on 1212 Coral Lane, but the Coral Lane on the east side of NC-12. You know, the old adage, a picture speaks a thousand words. I have a couple of pictures here for you, and the last two pictures will address something that has been mentioned, but you will be able to see it visually. I apologize for not being able to make eight of them, seven of them, but I will start here. To answer Commissioner Gregory's concern about the Coral Lane stub, it is not paved, as you can see. It's on the west side of 12. It's platted approximately 60 foot wide, 80 foot in depth. If you'll notice the vegetation on the left, it's to be appraised by the Corps of Engineers to see if, in fact, it coincides with the survey done by the Bike Path to see if that section on the left side or the south side of Coral Stub is wetlands. There's another picture of the Coral Lane, and you'll notice the hay-like substance that's over, that's on the ground, over the road surface. That was put there by a third party, not with Ocean Hill One Property Owners Association permission. I understand that somebody traveled on that road last year after that dry pampas grass clippings was put there. A fire was started, and the fire department had to come. So that is not, that is an improvement that we did not make, and I'm sure that wouldn't live up to the county standards. If you look at picture number five, it's a picture of A-1 Towing, you'll notice the very large, I think it's a 16-wheel truck that's there that belongs to A-1 Towing. And picture number six, there is a large hauler dumping sand that is stockpiling it. Now, you visualize those two trucks coming through a 16-foot-wide, unimproved road bed. How many times, I understand now that storage site has to be disbanded, but that sand has to go somewhere, those trucks have to come in and out. And again, that is a marshy, soft sand stub of road that was never improved. And we have included in our stormwater management plan a portion of that road to be used as stormwater drainage. Thank you, gentlemen.
Any questions for Ms. McDonald?
Any questions, sir?
What's being stored back there besides sand?
Well, when I took that picture and got hollered at Friday, there's sand all around the wood building and the holding tanks that are back there. There's mulch, there's a, oh, I would say a derelict bed of a large, what do they call it, that goes behind a 16-wheeler, that they, trailer, trailer bed, that has something in it, I don't know what. But when I got yelled at for taking the picture, I beat it out of there.
Any further questions? Thank you. Lynn Collins?
I'm Lynn Collins. I'd like to relinquish my time to Tom Nash if he needs it later.
Bonnie McCarthy?
My name is Bonnie McCarthy. I live at 1216 Coral Lane in Corolla. I'm a past president of the Property Owners Association, and I just want to say a couple of short things you've listened to a lot, and I don't want to belabor it. But that little, that little piece of land, the dedication to it, the way it was platted, should have been resolved a long time ago. And at the point when Mr. Friedman decided not to continue Ocean Hill One as residential through there, and they started another development, the villages of Ocean Hill, and made that all commercial land, that was the time and the point that really that little stub should have been rededicated, removed, or whatever. Now, who's at fault for that? Heaven only knows, and I don't wish to touch that. But what it seems to us is that, yes, there is a problem. Villages of Ocean Hill have commercial back there for a reason that I'm not privileged to know. They do not wish to put a road in to access their commercial or use their existing roads to access that commercial. I do not feel that Ocean Hill One should have to carry the burden of something another development did not do. I have spoken with our insurance company when I was president, and I was told in no uncertain terms that we were responsible since we held the deed to the land. We were responsible and liable for anything that should go wrong there. And the way that is now, two trucks, one going one direction, one going the other, could come around that corner, have a head-on collision, people could get killed. We do not wish to be responsible for that, and we ask you, please, to help us with this dilemma. Thank you very much.
Any questions for Ms. McCarthy?
Ms. McCarthy, let me first ask, Ben, does Mr. Brock still own the property on the other side of the access?
Yes. Yes.
Yes, sir.
Have y'all talked with Mr. Brock about moving or swapping the property? Because his property...
No, we have not.
His property abuts the illegal access, correct?
No. No. There's Corolla landscaping, well, it's now called distinctive, I think, or something like that.
North of the yellow.
It's what abouts it.
I asked where Mr. Brock... His is right here. I'm trying to wave the mouse on it.
Yeah.
You have Coral Lane stub, then you have...
On the other side of Kaye Cole's, right?
Yeah. Then you have...
But the illegal access supposedly that's being used is actually, I believe, in the villages of Ocean Hill, and I'm not sure, but does that belong to Mr. Friedman?
It does.
Mr. Friedman also is involved in the commercial back there. I think one should take care of their own house. Thank you very much.
Auden Merhoff?
Yes, I'd like to yield my time to Mr. Nash if he needs it.
Phil Schneider?
My name is Phil Schneider. I live at 1240 Atlantic Avenue in Ocean Hill Division One. Just very simply, I just want to reaffirm the fact that it was challenged earlier. It was 16 feet at the maximum width of that particular coral stub entrance. Mr. McCarthy and myself stood at the different ends of this tape, poised on the very edge of falling into the wet area, and it was a steep drop-off. It would be very dangerous to have that road in an undeveloped fashion dedicated for the use that's been proposed tonight. That's my comment.
Any questions for Mr. Schneider? If not, Clara Snyder?
Clara Snyder, and I'd like to relinquish my time as well to Mr. Nash if he needs it.
William Collins?
Yes, I would do the same.
Ed Ish?
I'll be very brief. I've come before this board before, and I'm not sure what's on your side, but looking at the platted easement, it's a fairly open area on a straightaway. That's a much safer ingress and egress for all that commercial traffic, trucks, et cetera. The area that Mr. Bickford's proposing to use on our property is much closer to Winx in the post office, and it's in a blind curve. It's immediately across from the entrance to our subdivision. I feel it'd be very dangerous to have commercial traffic passing in and out of there. Any additional time, I'll give to Tom Nash.
Any questions for Mr. Ish? If not, Trudy Merhoff?
Hi, my name's Trudy Merhoff. I live at 1229 Atlantic Avenue in Ocean Hill One. In the spring of 2008, we were in the midst of doing a rain garden at the corner of Pacific and Bismarck. At that time, we looked at other places that we might use for stormwater management. There was a group surveying in our neighborhood for our access, something about mapping in the county, and I asked them and hired them to go and survey Coral Lane to have some idea of what kind of size we had. We had also noticed that there was a lot of water in there. Was it wetlands? Wasn't a wetlands? We didn't know, but we thought we might be able to expand it, as we had done in Pacific. They could not find stakes on the north side or the south side. They put some stakes on the north side, which is the only area we were really concerned about because Kaye Cole's house is on the side, and we weren't sure where that ended and where Mr. Brock's lot started. Those stakes were removed within a week to 10 days' time. There are also a lot of trees, as you can see by the pictures in there. Somebody have us been trimming our tree limbs. And I don't mean breakage, I mean they've been trimming them. Some of the limbs are as big as two inches wide. We're very concerned about this. Thank you very much.
Any questions for Ms. Merhoff?
Thank you.
Ed McCarthy?
I have nothing I would add to, Mr. Nash or Kaye haven't already said, but I'll give the rest of my time to Mr. Nash.
Rachel Schroed?
Hi, my name is Rachel Schroed. I live at 1205 Bismarck, Corolla, Ocean Hill One. I would just like to say, first and foremost, that measuring Coral Lane was done by Phil Schneider and Ed McCarthy, both professional engineers. And number two, I would like to say that I think it's very unfair that because Mr. Friedman and Mr. Bickford are at odds and can't get along with the Corps of Engineers, that they want to use our property. I think they should clean up their own property and their own problems first. It just seems, you know, like not fair. Thank you.
Any questions for Ms. Schroed? If not, Larry Weaver?
I'm Larry Weaver. I own A-1 Towing. I never thought this thing would get this big of an issue or whatever. But personally, we got like the sewage treatment plant back there, we got the water people back there from the county with their backhoe and trailers and trucks and stuff, and we got Mr. and Mrs. Potten going back and forth. And I might go in and out there during the winter time, not eating at all one day, but then two or three times a day, and at the most during the summertime, you know, four or five. But it's not a major something that I'm running in and out there constantly all day long, or we got, you know, any customers or anything, a whole lot going and coming. But it is a big issue for us to be able to go and come and not feel like you're trespassing across somebody else's property that don't want you there. So if anything I can do to help improve or help the matter or anything and stuff, I'm willing to listen to anything.
Any questions for Mr. Weaver?
Mr. Weaver, do you care where the access is as long as you have it?
No, sir. As long as I'm... It's hard to be towing somebody's car and just can't leave it on the side of the road, if you know what I mean.
Any further questions for Mr. Weaver?
Yeah, I have one. So Larry, you would be acceptable to working with reestablishing the right-of-way that was proposed in 2001?
Anything, like we said, and look at it, because I've been improving that road and scraping that road and putting stone down on the roads back there and keeping the roads accessible. And then when the county come along and tuck over the water treatment plant, and they bought a backhoe and everything and stuff, what, to help maintain the county water lines and stuff, then the county and I teamed up together with sand and stone and materials and stuff, and I do have a little pile of stone back there, stockpile, that we take to scoop up some and go put it in the holes when the holes come out. And we got some sand that the state highway department gave us when they was cleaning out some of the other roads and ditches and all that and stuff, and we used that, too, to put down as a base and then put... to put down as a base and then put stone on top of it, and we all just worked together.
Thank you. Any further questions for Mr. Weaver? If not, Karen Ish?
Now, I ask you one question. Mr. Weaver, did you help make the improvements to what has been called as illegal access?
I was there at the time when it was done, but since it got done and got drilled and everybody approved it as done, now and then, when a hole came into it bad, I brought out some stone or something other with backhoe and helped fill it in the holes and stuff. But now, since it's been such a big issue of us traveling or what to do and stuff, and I got kind of told a mile away to kind of stay off the property some, because he put up, supposedly put a rope across it at one time, and then he tuck it back down and said, "Okay, they often use it," so I don't know what's...
All right, any further questions from the board?
One more. So you do have access to your existing road at the current time?
Yeah.
Thank you.
If no further questions from Mr. Weaver, then Karen Ish?
Karen Ish, 112 Teal Drive on Bell's Island. I also own property at 1203 Bismarck Drive in Corolla in Ocean Hill Section 1. Mr. Weaver made a really good point. Not only do we have A-1 towing back in this parcel, but we have the county water employees, we have EnviroTech, we've got backhoes, trailers, trucks, tow trucks, all sorts of modular homes being dragged through here. And if you can tell clearly, it's a largely undeveloped commercial parcel with an argument going on between two developers over where the access should be. This is an issue that's got to be cleared up. We can't keep pushing it from 1999 to 2010 without addressing safe legal access through the commercial area for the commercial area. Before I moved to Paradise, I was in the insurance industry, and I spent 25 years dealing with property and casualty lawsuits, and have more experience than I want to remember in that. But we, as the homeowners association, have to insure these roads. They are dedicated to public use, but they are owned by us. We buy insurance every year for these roads. Last year, our premium was $6,000 for one year of insurance, and that was as residential use only. I'm not sure we're going to be able to go back to our carrier and tell them, "Oh, now our roads include access for all this commercial traffic," and still get a policy or what it's going to cost us if we can. And that's an unfair burden to place on us. We're the third party here. I'm very sorry if Mr. Friedman and Mr. Bickford can't agree on where the access ought to be, but just because they're in a peeing contest doesn't mean we should get wet.
Any questions for Ms. Ish?
I have a question. I have a question for the county manager.
Karen, that was a first.
Does the county, in fact, store equipment back there?
We have our Southern Underbanks Water System Distribution Crew has access back there and does store back there, yes.
What access do we use?
To be honest with you, I'm not positive which one they use.
I think that most people are using the access by crawl landscaping, which is coined as illegal access at this point.
That's his question. To your knowledge, other than maybe Mr. Ponton, is there anybody using that Coral Lane access today?
Mr. Weaver says he does not use it. I have not seen him use it but a few times. And again, Mr. Ponton's use is residential. It falls within our insurance coverage and provision. We have no objection to Mr. Ponton using it at all.
Is there anybody other than Mr. Ponton that has a legal access back there?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Thank you. Karen, the platted easement was not part of Ocean Hill 1, so the only insurance issue you have is with Coral Lane. Is that correct?
Correct.
Any further questions for Ms. Ish? Not then Buddy Ponton?
My name is Buddy Ponton, or Thomas Nelson Ponton. I live at 1250 Ponton Lane. My thing is, I'm not trying to stop Mr. Weaver. I just want to have access to 12, and I really, if they want to move the road, I don't care where the access is, but until there is another access, I don't want to see Coral closed. And that's where I stand on it. Any questions?
They can't close Coral Lane, can they? Dedicated to the public?
That's correct. And of course, there's a statutory procedure, and you have one of those on your agenda later tonight on how a road is actually closed.
I have a question. Mr. Ponton, aren't you a commercial operator?
Well, I'm a commercial crabber, fisherman. I have been since the early '60s. I do run crabs out of there and fish, dorries, and pickup truck.
All right, any further questions for Mr. Ponton?
Got a question for you, then.
Thank you.
The fact that he has a legal access, does he fall underneath Ocean Hill's liability?
I do not know. Whether he falls under their liability insurance or not?
She said, Thomas Ish said that he did.
For residential?
Yeah, for residential.
I didn't know whether, since he has legal access on there, he's their responsibility or not.
I don't know the answer to that right offhand, Commissioner Ethers.
Because he had access. You got access back there when? 30 years ago?
I had an agreement with Mid-Atlantic Builders. When they put the water sprinkler system in there, which is where the water from the septic system is pumped in there, when they put that in there, they took the Old North-South Road, which was a pole road that went on into Corolla, and traded me access, which I thought went all the way to 12, which tied into Coral Lane, to sign off on the access to the old pole road. And I don't have my paperwork with me tonight. I just came into town today and...
But you've had legal access since you've been back there. That's what I'm...
Yes, sir. From one way or the other.
Before Mr. Friedman gave Ocean Hills their authority.
I had, I don't know what the date was on mine offhand. I wish I had my paperwork with me, but it's...
Mr. Ponton, I've got some. Father had some kind of access recorded in 1967 through that property. And I also want to clarify that the original easement gives access for residential purposes and the historical use by T. Nelson Ponton for commercial fishing purposes, and that includes vehicles up to one-on-one half tons.
Any further questions for Mr. Ponton?
I have one question. Mr. Ponton, you do live back there, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, buddy.
Those are all the persons that indicated an interest to present any testimony, so at this time, the applicant Mid-Atlantic Builders has opportunity to present any rebuttal evidence they'd like to present.
I believe the record would show that it's not only the Pontons that have the easement that goes into Coral Lane. Kirtok County has rights to that easement, EnviroTech has the rights to that easement, A-1 Towing has rights to that easement, and I think that's a recorded aspect, because that all happened before we began looking at other options. And all of those people have been using that quite some time, openly, notoriously, and continuously for 20 or 30 years, that easement has been used to access the property back there. It is a sticky situation. It was our intent, as has been presented here tonight, that we would move at 500 feet further north. By accident, when the crews went out there, they presumed we meant just north of Corolla Companies, because it was open during that area. If you did move 500 feet or another 200 feet, you would fall right in the middle of the sign that's in there that says Ocean Hill, and it was in the middle of the woods. So they presumed that they put it in the right place. A suggestion. Mr. Friedman and I have issues, but they have nothing really much to do significantly with this. I think Mr. Friedman's concern is that if he shifts the easement from where it legally is now to where we are calling it the illegal easement, he may never be able to get back his, what he needs, and it could ultimately wind up in the wrong place. I think he would be open to making a stipulation that he would be happy to create an easement where it is now illegally but frequently used, as so long as he could be assured that he could substitute, trade, however you want to say it, and go back to the legal easement that is there. Wouldn't make any difference to us, we just need an easement. All that he's concerned about is that he wouldn't face the possibility of getting closed off in the future if he really needs that one. So I think that's something to be considered. The second thing I would like to say is the issue of drainage that comes up. I'm not sure how long this area has been wetlands. I know that we did some drainage years ago, and it worked, and it's all closed up now. It would be a fairly simple matter for us to drain that piece of property. We have drainage pipes that run all the way through our property to the back and could drain that property. There are a lot of things here, I hope you understand, that we would like to see if we could work together and get this cleared up. We just find ourselves in a box right now, is we don't have any of these other things to work on, and this is the legal easement for all those folks. It seems inconvenient to us, and even to the owners, that they own this little stub. It probably should be conveyed to the county in fee. When it was conveyed by quitclaim deed by Mr. Friedman, the owner of the property in which it gave access to was never given notice of that. Corolla North Utility actually owned, at that time, all the land that was west of the stub, not Ocean Hill properties that he represented when he signed that agreement, or actually whoever signed it. Corolla North Utilities I own, and subsequently, it's been transferred to Mid-Atlantic Builders LLC. But we were never given any, as a normal street closure takes place, you have to deal with all the surrounding and adjacent property owners, and that certainly was not done at that time. Further, I think most people agree that perhaps we overuse the area back there, in the sense that this area desperately needs what it actually is used for. I mean, there are modules going up and down the beach. There is stuff going up it. It needs someplace to be used. This happens to be probably the only place in Corolla where that can conveniently take place. We intend to come back to you after this adventure, and once we get all the easements straightened, see if we can find some spaces for people, such as A-1 Towing, such as others who can use this, because it's a perfect location, and I think it's desperately needed by the folks that are up there. I would hope you would consider passing this with whatever restrictions you feel like are necessary. Give it a six-month or a year time for us to work out these things, and maybe it could be, I don't know, y'all can figure out how that would best work. But we're dedicated to try to make it work. We have a legal easement. We have some issues with a legal easement. We have an illegal easement, and nobody's closed down, and we're using it. And that doesn't seem to disturb everybody. And then we have another legal easement, which is that we have all these rights-of-way that go right into the stub at Coral Lane. So everybody must have considered at that time that that gave them access to Route 12, because even the county was part of that agreement. I believe that covers anything. Can I answer any questions?
Questions for Mr. Bickford?
Mr. Bickford, why and/or how long will it take you and Mr. Friedman to resolve this issue? The testimony we've had so far is that we have three means of getting Mr. Ponton, your business, and the other businesses, and the county, back to an area, and everybody is in agreement that they need to be back there, including your side of the story. The problem is the correct right-of-way, the legal right-of-way that the people of Ocean Hill deserve, that you deserve, that the county deserves, and that Mr. Ponton deserves, and Mr. Weaver. And so why can't you and Mr. Friedman, why didn't you resolve this thing a year ago? And how much longer is it going to take? The county has worked in similar circumstances with Mr. Friedman on almost an identical issue on the roads, and, I mean, he was agreeable then. But, I mean, I just do not understand why we're going through this all these years, and you go through all these legal expenses that everybody's incurring when it's simply a matter of neighbors and developers getting along with the county. The county's willing to, and it looks like to me the people are willing to, and I'm not saying there's a problem, but everybody else, you and Mr. Friedman, need to do your part and come up to the plate.
I don't disagree with that. I don't find that easy to do at the time, and we do have some differences in other areas.
Do you not find it that easy to deal with Mr. Friedman? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
I understand that.
We have some differences in things that are unrelated to this particular issue that he has sued me for, okay? We are in court...
If you would, I'm not being argumentative, but relate it just to this issue, because that's what this board is considering. Just relate it to this issue. What is the problem? I mean, we have the platted easement that is not used, so we have that piece of property, we have the illegal access. If we narrow it down from the three accesses to those two, why can't you and Mr. Friedman work out something with either of those two accesses?
Do you believe the county would be willing to do what I suggested, which is give Mr. Friedman the right to create an easement, whether it's temporary or permanent or whatever, at the illegal location there, with the right to substitute it back to the one that is legally there if he so needs it? Because I don't see how, he has no currency, there's no motivation for him to just all of a sudden move it for my benefit and just say, "Well, yeah, just because I don't like you and we're in court, yeah, I'll be happy to work this out with you." I don't think, there's no motivation for him to do that.
Well, I think that's surely something that the board can discuss when the public hearing concludes.
That's fine. I mean, I think that could...
Option, I'm glad you brought that forward.
I mean, I really think that could probably work it out. And I can understand his fear. I mean, if he gives up the one that he's got, then he may never get it back again. And there's very clear stipulations on where you can put them and how many you can put. I don't know that that would work, but I would think it would.
So in essence, what you're saying, it would afford the opportunity to have two easements there instead of just the one?
Well, that could be, it could be either way. You could just hold the 30 easement that is there, allow him to open up another one, but also allow him to reverse that in some time in the future and go back to the one that's there. But also, I mean, we have the issue that as of today, we don't have an easement. What we would like to do is be able to use Coral Lane limitedly until we can have a certain window of time for the county and us to work this out, and I'm sure the county's input, because the county doesn't have an easement either. I mean, county, the legal easement for the county to get back to the water plant comes through Coral Lane. So does EnviroTech, so does the Ponton, and so does A-1 Towing. So at this moment, we have no easement, except for that. What we'd like to see happen is a short period of time to continue to use that so we can resolve, just as you suggested, the other two. And I think it's reasonable, and I think it can happen, but it won't happen overnight. And we could use the county's...
How long will it happen?
I'd say three to six months. And again, I think we need the county's cooperation in making it happen.
I have a question, too, if I could address it, probably Mark. What is the problem with Corps of Engineers? You know, we know they're meddling in everything, and so is the EPA, and, you know, we've all seen probably the letter from Senator Basnight to President Obama about the Bonner Bridge. You know, there's some government entity somewhere stopping everything we're trying to do, and this is a relatively piddly little deal. Is there some way that we might be able to give you some help handling that problem?
I can't figure out how to charge enough to answer the question as to what's wrong with the Corps of Engineers and what it will take to get them straightened out.
Start seeking, figure out the one thing that might be working, where everything else we consider that way. But do you believe that is a problem that we could solve by, you know, putting some effort into it?
I'm not sure that the problem with the 30-foot easement can be resolved just by putting effort into it. It's complicated, and the Corps doesn't want to give, and they're concerned that if they admit that they were wrong, that it'll be precedent-setting and affect a whole lot of other matters that are on their plate, and so... a whole lot of other matters that are, that are on their plate, and, and so I just, I just don't know. I would like to try to clarify a little bit of the wetlands and the issue on the Coral Lane part of it, just for the record. I believe, based on the survey that, that our people did, and based on my own observation up there last week in Coral Lane, that, that the tape that you saw was being taken actually to the west of Coral Lane on Mr. Bickford's property, and what they were measuring to was the ditch that you heard Kay Cole testify about that was created by the villages at Ocean Hill. And it does have some standing water in it because the drainage is blocked up, but she also stated that to her knowledge, it's not wetlands. But the, based on the picture that, that was put into the evidence, it's pretty, and based on the survey that we submitted into the evidence, it's pretty clear that, that that tape was actually to the ditch on Mr. Bickford's property and not within the Coral Lane right-of-way.
All right, if there's nothing further from the applicant, no further questions from the board?
I do have one question, Mr. Bickford.
Yes, sir.
Regarding Judge Parker's ruling where he had the three findings, do you agree that his findings were correct, that Ocean Hill does have the authority to grant access and easements across that, through Coral Lane?
I haven't read the opinion. I, I would be speculating to answer the question, but I think it's absolutely clear that when you, when you have property such as that, and it's truncated by a public right-of-way such as Route 12, I really question whether or not they have jurisdiction across the street to prevent someone to have access to their property that they have used for 25 years. I don't, I'd like to see that tested in court, because I don't think they would win that one. They may own the land, but they have limited rights because of that.
Thank you.
One last question. You are currently using the quote "illegal easement"?
Yes, sir. Mr. Ponton regularly uses the one that he is, actually has title to, and for various reasons, some of the others do too, but generally, we use the, the easement that's, that's paved.
If nothing else from the applicant, nothing else from the board, then the evidentiary phase of the hearing is closed, and now it'd be up to the board to discuss.
I think we will not have.
No. I, I think you all presented your testimony, but, but certainly.
Do we not have rebuttal?
No. It's the applicant that has the right to rebuttal. Then close the evidentiary phase, and up to the board then to make a determination as to what his decision will be.
It's now time for the board to make a motion. You've heard the evidence for and against the request, and we'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I think I will make a motion, preface on some conditions. I'm going to move that we approve PBO 915 with the finding of facts and staff recommendations included in the case analysis in the following conditions. The permit shall be valid for six months, during which time the applicant shall pursue an alternative access for the use. The applicant must reapply at the end of this six-month period for reconsideration of the permit. Any additional insurance cost that is borne by the homeowners association will be paid by the applicant. A-1 Towing will continue to use the existing easement until such time it is closed by Mr. Friedman.
I have a motion from Commissioner Idlet. Let me have a second.
I'll second that.
I have a second from Commissioner Rohr. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, signal an aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign?
No.
Do we have two noes? Okay. Motion carried. Now move to item five. Public hearing in action. DB 87-56 Monterey Shores PUD. Request for an amended special use permit to designate an additional 1.1 acres of commercial zoning within the planned unit development. The property is located in Monterey Shores, PUD, tax map 116, parcels 3W and 10, Papa Branch Township. I believe we also have to have a swearing in.
That's correct, Mr. Chairman.
So, as people are leaving, anyone that wishes to speak on this matter, in favor of, or in opposition to, you have to come forward and be sworn in at this time. You'll need to place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand. Need to get some more Bible. There you go. I'm going to do it after this. Don't hear this. Does everybody got the left hand on the Bible? Raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God? You're now sworn. Mr. McCray?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, like the previous matter, this also is a quasi-proceeding where the board again sits much like a court of law, and you must make a determination based upon evidence that is substantive, competent, and material evidence. Again, the applicant, as in the last case, is afforded certain rights to due process, which includes the opportunity, opportunity to present their case, to examine and cross-examine witnesses, and to offer any rebuttal testimony or evidence if they see fit to do so. With that, Mr. Chairman, we will call on Mr. Woody to present the staff's analysis.
Thank you, Mr. McCray. This is kind of part one to what we're hearing tonight. This, this, action on this item actually determines whether or not we hear the second item, which is the Corolla Fun Park. So I just want to clarify that what you're considering now is an amendment to the Monterey Shores planned unit development, and that's the idea of the entire Monterey Shores PUD, which is quite large, as you can see there. In Currytuck County, all of our PUDs by design and historically have included 10% commercial, 35% open space, and the remainder of that, the remaining 55%, is residential. So that's kind of the breakdown of our PUDs. Monterey Shores is, Monterey Shores Phase 1 and 2, then Corolla Bay is actually Phase 3 of the Monterey Shores PUD. What's before you tonight with this first case is the idea that the applicant of the fun park, before they can proceed with that, they need to allocate additional area as commercial designation within the PUD. So what that means is, is, and you can see on the map there, and you've got a lot going on, but basically the cross-hatched areas are areas that are either being modified for commercial or allocated. In the kind of wide area, the greenish-looking area, that's a conservation area on our land use plan, and you see there, there's a red rectangle that's included in that. That is the, that is existing GB zoning. The county does have a piece of land or a portion of a land that is owned general business in the conservation area. That cross-hatched area is a modification they're making to that. So they're actually, they're actually doing is they're shrinking the amount of commercial zoning in the conservation area. Now, you look adjacent that, to that, to the right at the corner of Malia and Ocean Trail, you see another cross-hatched area that's over top of kind of an orange color. That's full service. That is currently zoned residential. That is actually additional commercial allocation. So at the end of the day, what you have here is where you see the F and you have an orange color, that's commercial. The cross-hatched area over the yellow color, that would become commercial, and the cross-hatched area over the red color, that shrinks that commercial. So all that, I hope that makes sense. What that results in basically is a proposal of an additional 1.10 acres of commercial approximately, and that's primarily contained in that corner of Malia and Ocean Trail. And that gives you a total of 34.46 acres of commercial, which is basically the 10% commercial allocation of Monterey Shores PUD. So what, what you're seeing tonight is basically the end of commercial designation of Monterey Shores PUD. And just to clarify, that also leaves beyond that, the required open space in Monterey Shores, as I said earlier, 35% or 124 acres. When this is said and done, you, you have 37.1% acres of open space or 131.9 acres. So what I'm trying to say is that if this designation is approved by the board, you end up having 10% commercial allocation of Monterey Shores. You have 37% of Monterey Shores in open space, and the remainder is just designated as residential. In your staff report, you have the findings of fact and the staff recommendations. Planning Department did hear this particular request at their February meeting. The planning board did recommend approval of this, and they actually, and they admitted number one of the staff recommendation, that was a correction. So yes, planning board did recommend approval of this. At this point, I'm going to save most of my, my presentation, I think, for the next case, should we hear that, because that relates specifically to the land use. This is just a zoning designation. I'll be happy to answer any questions you have at this time.
Any questions for Mr. Woody?
I have, what's the nature of that conservative, or conservation area that's in the pink crosshatch?
The conservation area is, is a designation on our land use plan, as you know, and it generally is, it is part of a larger tract of land. You can see there, has a pond on it that's used for some stormwater holding capacity. It's got a lot of kind of scrub brush, it's got some, some vegetation, some trees on it, it's got a lot of wetlands on it. Now, of course, the area that they're proposing for development does not include wetlands, so that is out of the wetlands. But it's just kind of a mixture of, this kind of marsh-type area, yeah.
How, how close are houses to this proposed?
The, the closest house to this commercial designation, actually, it's the closest residential property, the condos of Monterey Shores. And if you look up here where it says Monterey Shores condos, those are about 700 feet from this commercial property to those condos. If you go across the street towards Buck Island, where there are some more like single-family type homes, that's a little over 1,000 feet to those. Now, but I will say from a zoning perspective, on this one, it is, it is surrounded by commercial zoning. You have Monterey Shores Plaza across the street, you have Farmer's Daughter just north of it, which is commercially zoned, and of course, south of it, you have Timbuk 2. So there is a lot of commercial zoning around this area. And the part they're designating as commercial is actually fronts on Highway 12. I think so from that standpoint, it, it does.
Any further questions for Mr. Woody from the board? If not, does the applicant have any questions for Mr. Woody at this time?
No.
Time to make present your case.
I'm John Delucia from Albemarle Associates. I'm a professional engineer. I think Ben did a good job explaining that. Just be aware, Mr. Rohr, that that purple area that you see designated in the commercial, in the, in the conservation area was what was previously approved as, as commercial area, and we're trying to reduce that. We're reducing it to about 15,000 square feet.
I just want to make sure we're not flooded.
No. We'll get into that the next part. Thank you.
The board have any questions for Mr. Delucia? If not, then we'll proceed to those who've expressed an interest in presenting evidence. First is Michael Meredith, who you'll please approach and state your name and address for the record.
My name's Michael Meredith, 4805 Vista Lane Kitty Hawk. I'm the co-owner and operator of Kitty Hawk Water Sports in Corolla, which is in Timbuk 2, and also the Golf Links Miniature Golf in Timbuk 2. My family and I have been longtime landowners on the Kurutuk Outer Banks and also on the Kurutuk Mainland. But, you know, we grew up hunting and fishing in Kurutuk County, had my first business management experience in 1995, where I was operating a water sports facility in Corolla. And I've been here every year since then, seen a lot of changes, most of them good over the years. But right now, with the pending bridge project coming in at Timbuk 2 possibly, the Corolla Fun Park, I'm definitely very concerned about the preservation of Corolla, especially in this area, this small area. The topic of rezoning, I believe the board should deny the request or at least delay it until this area has a chance to see what effects this huge bridge project will have here. There's just too much commercialization in the small, quiet area in a short period of The first impression of Corolla is going to change drastically if visitors come over Timbuk 2 on huge bridge terminus, and the first thing they see are the bridge construction, food line, plaza, and a Corolla Fun Park. It's not the natural beauty that people come here for, it's not the image that Kurutuk County should support. It will go against all the development of Kurutuk Outer Banks up to this point over the last several decades. This parcel of property has plenty of commercial zoning, they don't need anymore, and they have a residential neighborhood right next door directly opposes it. It's unnecessary to change residential zoning to commercial, it's already jeopardized in this, to commercial zoning in this area that's already jeopardized in Corolla. The rezoning is not warranted and is not necessary. Please take more time to analyze the effect of this decision on this area, as well as the residents, the business owners, and visitors. Please vote no to rezone. That's my opinion. Also, I don't think that a lot of the people here that are speaking on the Corolla Fun Park understood how related these two, rezoning and the fun park issue are, because I don't think it was advertised well enough. And I talked to at least two or three groups that are in here to talk against the Corolla Fun Park that didn't understand that the zoning was directly related, so, you know, another reason we might need more time to, to really think about that.
Any questions for Mr. Meredith from the board?
Just one. Did you say you operated commercial businesses?
Yes.
And, and what type of businesses?
Timbuk 2, it's a Corolla golf, or the miniature golf and a water sports.
And you're opposed to a miniature golf course here?
Yes.
Thank you.
Further questions for Mr. Meredith?
Didn't you all operate a similar venture in Duck?
I'm sorry?
Didn't you and your family operate a similar venture in Duck?
We have water sports in Duck, yeah.
Right, right there in the middle of town like this is?
No, we're not in the middle of town.
You weren't in the middle of Duck?
On the northern end of Duck.
Thank you.
Advocate have any questions?
No.
Mr. Tim Rary?
My name's Tim Rary. I live at 701 West First Street in Kill Devil Hills. I, I'm here as, as a representative of Timbuk 2 Association, Property Owners Association. I also operate, am the operations manager of Corolla Raceway. My family owns that, and we've operated for 14 years. We've always adhered to all the land uses and ordinances, UDL ordinances, sign ordinances, everything else. Timbuk 2 has not requested any zone changes for anything. We don't realize why the commissioners are considering rezoning everything just for this one applicant. A lot of change has been made just for this fun park to be put in. If this is not rezoned, then they're not, then do they have, do they have the property to do this? I mean, is this, will this keep them from putting that in? Mr. Woody, does that bring it up to the 55% or above for the residential? Or is it within the limits? Why are we changing, making special considerations? We just, we just want them to be able to adhere to all the same rules as everybody else has, has had to in the past. I do have some more issues, and I will speak on the fun park next issue. Any questions, gentlemen?
Any questions for Mr. Rary?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Did you say you operate go-kart track at Timbuk 2?
Corolla Raceway, yes, sir. We've operated for 14 years there, adhered to all the ordinances, and supported the community.
And there's one being proposed for this development as well?
There's a difference between the entertainment structure that's there now in Corolla and a large fun park, sir.
Yes or no, sir?
Yes, sir. I am opposed to it.
You're opposed to the same business you operate?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any further questions for Mr. Rary? Commissioner Rary?
So you're asking us to overlook the 10% rule that every PUD got for commercial property that allowed you to be able to operate on this particular use?
No, sir. I'm just asking that they follow the same procedures and, and stay within the same limits and adhere to the land use and ordinances and everything else that everyone else has had to. Why is everything allowed to be rezoned? Why shouldn't they just?
That's not changing the land use policies.
If it was zoned 001 residential or 001 affluent spray fields or all that, why is it allowed to be adjusted around?
Because he's allowed 10% commercial use, and he can move his properties around. That is allowed, and has always been allowed. Okay.
Any further questions for Mr. Rary?
I have a question for Mr. McCray. Is, is the board with the Senate's authority, if this is denied, to amortize the use of go-karts on the Outer Banks and do away with all of them?
It would be my opinion that you could. Yes.
Thank you.
Any further questions for Mr. Rary?
No questions.
If not, Andrew Meredith?
My name's Andrew Meredith. Good evening, my name's Andrew Meredith, Jr. I live at 100 Ocean Bay Boulevard, Duck. I, my brother said, we have the water sports in Timbuk Two, as well as the Putt-Put concession. And the deal here with the residential zoning is, wherever their commercial is now, they're actually moving it in closer to the residents that live there. The homeowners association, which I believe is going to speak for Monterey Shores, and spoke at the planning board meeting, are very much opposed to this. You know, they bought their houses and moved into their houses there, knowing this is residential right here in their backyard. Now, you're going to get a, a large increase in traffic, lighting, stormwater runoff, noise especially. And, you know, it was, it was zoned residential because it's in a residential area right there next to those apartments, and those houses that are right next to those apartments. And, you know, this, this property could be used for any number of developments. These guys are big developers, they can come up with, with different ideas. I don't understand why they have to come in and have this residential changed to commercial, let them use the commercial they've got. Let's see. Basically, they're asking for so much that they have to change the zoning to fit it all in. And as far as your argument with, yeah, we're in the putt-putt business, this may be neither here nor there, but I appreciate that you guys knew it. We bought a lease from J&amp;D Partnership on that putt-putt golf course. We hold that lease with Buck Island Incorporated. We have a non-competition clause in our lease. This property was purchased from Buck Island Incorporated on October 15th, and anything that encumbered that land, when Buck owned it, should encumber it while these guys own it. And, think about it, we've all been to Timbuk Two Shopping Center, do we really need, they're not trying to put in one putt-putt golf course, trying to put in 36 holes, two, we have 18. We're a small family business, these guys are a major corporation, do we really need three putt-putt golf courses in one shopping center? Do we really need to rezone residential land so they can put in two more putt-putt golf courses? We're in the back, no signage, these things are going to go right up by the road, big lights, foot traffic, if it was a half a mile away, it'd be a different story, you had to drive down to it or something. These guys are going to go from 18 to 54. Your business plan, I mean, we're looking at 60, 80%, and we're a small family business, we're going to be crushed. I hope you guys deny this rezoning and don't even consider the special use permit.
Any questions for Mr. Meredith from members of the board?
Do you have a copy of your agreement that says no one can open a putt-putt course on the Outer Banks?
I can get you a copy of my lease, I don't have it here with me, but it can definitely be arranged.
Would that go with a sale of property?
I mean, I, I do not know, Mr. Chairman, I mean, certainly a document of that nature would, would just state what it says for what that's worth. I mean, that does not only give you any ideas to, to its validity or applicability to the applicant's property.
I've got a question for Mr. McCray. Do you also represent ING Holdings?
No, sir, I'm a full-time employee of Currituck County.
Okay, I just, I was mistaken on that. Okay. I thought that would be a conflict, I didn't know if you had done work for them before.
No, their attorney's present tonight.
Okay, well, lots of these guys have more than one attorney, I'm sure. They got a lot of money.
Any further questions for Mr. Meredith? Commissioner Ethridge?
No.
Does Afkan have any questions?
No, sir.
Nothing further than Bob Schultz?
My name's Bob Schultz, I live at 964 Sunset Crescent in Corolla. I'm currently the president of the Monterey Shores Homeowners Association, and I'd like to thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak to you, ladies and gentlemen, this evening. One of the things I'd like to say is about this rezoning, is the homeowners of Monterey Shores, when they bought there, this was residential land, okay? And if we rezone it and make it commercial, it's going to devalue their properties, make it difficult for them to sell the properties, their homes, and have an impact on their lives. Not only that, but when the Fun Park goes in, we've got noise pollution, air pollution, and light pollution in our neighbor's backyard, plus the safety issue of where they're located on 12, right on that turn. So I will, I would like, like you gentlemen to think about that this evening, and vote no on this rezoning. Do you have any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Schultz?
Thank you, gentlemen.
I have one.
Yes, sir.
Has, has there been a traffic study of any kind done as to the impacts, traffic and that type of stuff will have?
Not, not that I'm, not that I'm aware of, no. But if, if you've been up in that area, you know how bad that curve is right there on 12.
I have a question for Mr. Schultz.
Yes.
What is between this proposed location and the residential area of Monterey Shores?
This area here goes up to, back, back up to like, two of our cul-de-sacs in Monterey Shores, and there's a, a small area between them.
Is it not commercial between them?
There's some commercial between those, but this area here is non, is residential, and that, that's why it was residential, and that's where Monterey Shores and their homeowners, why they bought there, because it was residential and it wouldn't be commercial.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Eilich?
Sir? Yes, sir, just one more question. You, you said it would devalue the, the prices of homes and that type of stuff.
Yes, sir.
Has anyone done a real estate study to?
To see how much they've gone down already? Well, sir, they've gone down so much already, okay? There are so many homes for sale up in Corolla that you're aware of, okay? That we don't need any other problems with devaluation of the home, okay? I personally, or I don't know whether you, members of the board, would like to buy a property, okay, that would back up to a resident, or a, a commercial venture like this. I mean, if you would, we've got some land in Monterey Shores, would love to sell you.
Mr. Woody, can you take the mouse and show me where the residential at Monterey Shores is?
There's condos here, and there's houses here.
But the red area is the area we're discussing?
That's correct.
Where's the closest single? Where's the closest single-family home?
I actually think the closest single-family home is probably in Buck Island, right here.
Isn't that where the Wings, the Burger King, and Ace Hardware and everything fronts out along there?
Farmer's Daughter, the gas station, yeah, then Ace Hardware, so.
And then, up, up above that is the first house at Monterey Shores?
That's where the single-family dwellings start in Monterey Shores, that's correct.
That first building, that last building, yellow, is by Currituck.
That's it, yeah. That's right, it's behind that, I'm sorry, you're correct.
And this is all open area here, that goes right back up the butts against where the cul-de-sacs come out.
The closest residential is at the condo buildings, which are about 700 feet away, which are labeled on the map.
I'm just trying to get in my mind where the houses are next to the red. They're up there beyond the top yellow portion?
Up, right up, yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Wes Zablodil, is that right? Zablodil, sorry. State your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Wes Zablodil, and I live at 845 Azure Court in Monterey Shores. I'm on one of the cul-de-sacs that you can't see up there. My main two concerns are the traffic, as Ben stated earlier, most of this area is commercial already, adding more commercial. We already have a traffic problem up there. I don't know if we have a traffic study done, but we have a lot of traffic, and we have a clog problem up there already. We're not anticipating the bridge coming in for that big one reason, too. I'm concerned about the noise. They're talking about having go-karts with two-cycle, possibly four-cycle engines. Two-cycles make the noise of a chainsaw, a four-cycle makes the noise of a lawnmower. I would prefer not to have that in my backyard all the time, at 10 o'clock at night or later, plus all the lights, as Bob pointed out, light pollution. The other businesses in that area are mostly walk-around, people aren't making a lot of noise, it's not late-night stuff with big floodlights trying to flood a golf course where people can see what they're doing. That's my main concern. I don't want my property values to go down. I live the second cul-de-sac up, I have a real nice property, and as was pointed out, the value's already low, and I don't know if somebody wants to buy it if they have a racetrack in their backyard. I may have a problem selling it in the future if I need to. Thank you. Do you have any questions?
Yes, sir, I do. How thick is the vegetation between your house and this proposed?
There are pine trees, and they stand very tall, 60 feet, but it's not like a dense forest. One of my other concerns is that any of the future expansion, they were planning on using the pine trees as noise buffer, I would think that as they expand, which I expect them to do, they would be cutting this trees and vegetation down.
Expand what?
Any further expansion north in that area? Most of this, all the way across there, as far as I know, is nothing but just marsh vegetation. And until you get to Monterey Shores, you really don't start getting the pine trees.
If I understood Mr. Woody correctly, this is as far as they can expand completely, right, Mr. Woody? In commercial activities?
Yeah, they've, they've got a wetland delineation, it's, it's really hard to see on that, but they, they are limited in wells they can expand. There are limit, there's limited amount of upland on that parcel, so yes.
And you say they've reached a 10% of?
Well, yes, that's another point, they've reached a 10% of their commercial allocation, so that would have to change.
Thank you.
Any further questions from the board?
Woody, put, put the red back up there again.
This one?
No, the one, right there. Is the Mid-County Bridge slated to touch anywhere closer to the red?
No, that's, that's, there is an old terminus, terminus location that was there, but the actual, one of the locations, one of the options for the Mid-County Bridge is actually south of Timbuk Two, so it would be, well, again, down here, cut off the map, that's one of the options.
Any further questions from the board?
Thank you.
Seeing none, is there any rebuttal evident from the applicant?
Just one comment if I might.
Mr. Gray? Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Kraus Gray, I'm an attorney for the applicant. My address is 102 Victoria Court. I moved into Currituck County about four years ago, from the other county south, so. Just a couple of quick points. I think the point needs to be made fairly clearly that all around this particular piece of property that we're looking to get the rezoning at is commercial. There's, there's not any residual for the piece that we're asking to be rezoned. We're also asking to reduce down the amount of commercial that is located within the conservation area, so we're trying to reduce down there. As far as the other points that were made, I think they speak for themselves, so if you have any other questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Any questions for Mr. Gray?
How much of the area is in the conservation area?
I'm sorry, say again?
How much of the property is in the conservation area?
The conservation area is approximately, the, the total area of the conservation is approximately 36 acres, ballpark. The commercial part of it is about 1.104? 1.17, I would be. 1.17 being reduced down.
Okay, so you're using 1.17 acres of the, the 30-some acres conservation area?
That is already zoned commercial, that's already designated as a GB area, we're reducing it down by approximately 1,500 square feet up there.
Thousand.
Thousand, okay. Let me get my corrective over here. Couple other points, I'm John Delucia again, from Albemarle Associates. The nearest residential unit in Monterey Shores is over 1,000 feet away. The nearest residential, single-family dwelling to the neighboring go-kart facility is about 700 feet away, just to give you some perspective. We also have a wastewater treatment plant between us and that area, that has blowers and scrubbers and things like that, that probably will create a lot more noise than we're going to talk about in the next S U P.
Where's the wastewater plant at, Mr. Woody?
The wastewater plant is right here.
So there's a wastewater plant?
Yeah.
In between? Okay.
Any further questions for the applicant?
Thank you.
If not, that will close the evidentiary phase. Mr. Chairman, it's now to the board to discuss and make a determination regarding this application.
All right, commissioners, you've heard the evidence, both for and against, and it's time to have a motion.
I have a question first.
Yes, sir, Mr. Eilich?
I read somewhere in the file here, Ben, about discrepancy between the green space area and the NC Deaner water system, I mean, has that been cleared up?
No, that, that is an issue that I was, I was, was going to raise on the next case, but it's, it's relevant here, too, and that is something, just, the consideration is that when a wastewater treatment plant's established, the operator of that plant has to set aside green space area, that, that's, can be active disposal area, or it could be future disposal area. Monterey Shores wastewater treatment plant was under a moratorium for many years, and that recently got lifted, and as part of that, new green space area was established. This particular piece of property, the one where the, in Monterey Shores, PUD, does include some green space area on that property. Now, my understanding is, and I may, the attorney may want to follow up on this, but when that green space was established on the property, it was done so without the knowledge of the property owner, it was done so by Carolina Water Service, who operates the utility. Staff would like to see, at some point, we, we need to see that discrepancy fixed. The attorney's opinion is that, in this particular instance, that since the property owner had no knowledge of that disposal, disposal area being placed on this property, I don't, I think you feel like we can't use that as, as a, as a finding necessarily, but we would like to see that cleaned up, that needs to be fixed.
What occurred is that Carolina Water, without any legal authority, made, made application to division of water quality to include this property owner's property under a wastewater permit. And now, all of a sudden, this applicant, property owner has found out about it, and so it's been my opinion and belief that the county shouldn't even acknowledge that area as, while it may be under a DWQ permit, the property owner could do things such as put up a fence, tear out any structure that might be built on his property by Carolina Water, and thus, this green space area, if the applicant so chose, could not be used for green space, despite the fact that it might be under a permit issued by DWQ.
So it's not issued based on place, would you?
That, that's been my opinion.
Okay. But as a side, I do think that following this hearing, regardless of the outcome, the planning staff will follow up with Carolina Water to try to correct this, because it needs to be corrected.
And I, I would agree with that, and I think that, in my opinion, it'd be Carolina Water's responsibility to, to make that correction. And the state of North Carolina, which probably really ought to do it on its own motion.
Well, I have a, a question. Is this request consistent with a unified development ordinance?
Yes, the, the allocation of commercial is, is consistent with what's allowed in the UDO. Yes, sir.
Mr. McCray, we're sitting here talking about an application for Monterey Shores, is that correct?
An application from?
Based on their property, it's in the Monterey PUD, correct?
Yes.
So the issue that's been raised from the restrictive covenant from Timbuk Two really has no merit here, does it?
That's from what, just from what I heard tonight, it sounds like that might be a legal issue between the, the less sea and less soar in that matter. I do not know whether or to what extent it even applies in this current situation.
Well, they're two separate entities already.
That's what it sounds like, from what I heard tonight, just as you heard.
Thank you.
All right. Wait for a motion. Do we have a clock?
It dies from lack of a motion. It dies from lack of a motion.
Well, I'm asking the, the chair to call on your rules of procedure as to whether there, there is a, a motion on the table or not.
It's my understanding, Mr. Chairman, that if there's no motion, the, the issue dies from lack of a motion.
Is there a motion? Going once? We have no motion. So...
Item six, so...
Applicant, application dies for lack of a motion.
And I think, Mr. Chairman, then, as Mr. Woody indicated, the next matter was contingent upon this matter first being approved by the board and therefore, it's not that you could take action or take up the next case.
All right. I do have a request from some of the older gentlemen on the board for a five-minute break.
Ten minutes.
Ten-minute break for some of them. I'd like to call the meeting back to order, and item six will be skipped because it was contingent on item five. It'll be continued. And item seven is public hearing and action on intent to permanently close Melbourne Sawyer Road and Poplar Branch. Mr. McCray?
Mr. Chairman, this matters on, pursuant to your resolution of intent to permanently close Melbourne Sawyer Road and Poplar Branch Township, specifically, this road is off a spot road and leads into the county's rural center, a park area down in that part of the county. Melbourne Sawyer Road currently serves a private access subdivision of several lots, which two of which the county recently purchased in order to relocate and make an entryway into the county's rural center. Closure of this road will allow for relocation of that entry road to be more central property that the county has purchased. To the north of this particular piece of property is the residence and property of Brenda Dotsey and her husband, Ms. Dotsey being the daughter of former Commissioner of Melbourne Sawyer. Ms. Dotsey has been briefed and informed and agrees to the closure of this road and the county's plan to ensure her continued access to the property via a drive off of the county's entryway into the rural center. And with that representation to her, she is, states that she has no problem with the closure and abandonment of Melbourne Sawyer Road as it currently exists at the right of way. As you considered this matter in the public hearing, you ultimately, after the public hearing is closed, have to make a determination that closure of this road is not conferred to the public interest and that no property owner in the subdivision in which this road is located will be deprived of reasonable access to their property. So those would be the two findings that you would have to make. And at this time, it would be appropriate to open the public hearing, Mr. Chairman.
All right. I'll now open the public hearing. I have, no one has signed up. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak to this issue? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing and ask the board for their motion.
Motion for approval, Mr. Chairman?
A second.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Item eight, consideration of ordinance amending Title III, Section 10, dash 134, to allow dogs at the rural center second reading. I believe this is because it, Mr. Rohr was absent, that it had to have a second reading.
And to remind you, it requires unanimous vote in order for an ordinance to be adopted as per reading. It now, tonight, may be adopted by the council majority.
Move for approval.
I have a motion for approval, a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Item nine is discussion and consideration of resolution establishing single-family residential permitting incentive plan. We discussed this sometime back and we asked Mr. Nelms to meet with staff, and I believe they have met and have something to present to us. I believe Mr. McCray does.
Well, I have a power point, Mr. Chairman, that I'm going to try to bring it up.
You were going the wrong way.
Yeah?
Yeah. You got the button.
I said one more thing, did I?
Yeah.
We'll have a technology training session tomorrow morning.
We'll get this under one.
Oh, I got you, I'm good.
I was told differently earlier. Okay. What's presented tonight for your consideration is what we've entitled from the staff perspective as a single-family residential permitting incentive plan. This is the idea on the county level to help foster and stimulate, this...
Motion for a drumming.
I would get biting at that one.
I was also warned not to press the button so quickly. All right. This is a program or incentive for construction in order to promote and increase employment in the county, economic growth, and as a side of that, of course, the county revenue is enhanced by some economic growth and activity, in particular, the improvement of rural property. The incentive is to fully reimburse building permit fees for single-family residential building permits with a value of up to $250,000. That is the value of the structure, would not include the value of the land in that amount. So, and that's what's, it would include for the construction renovation or improvement of single-family residential structures and also the accessory or pertinent structures as staff felt like in conversation, that we should include things, not just the single-family residential structure itself, but any improvement to single-family residential properties such as bulkheads, might benefit from this type of incentive program. There are a number of criteria that would have to be met in order for a building permit applicant to be able to be eligible for this program and reimbursement of the building permit fee. First of all, a construction and first inspection of the single-family residential structure or project would have to begin within 30 days and would have to be, again, that first inspection. The certificate of occupancy would have to be issued within 12 months from the date the building permit is issued. All that, again, being the idea that this is something where you would want to foster quickly the stimulation of the economic growth and the jobs, employment, and expenditure revenue within the county, as opposed to someone getting the permit and holding on to some period of time and not really do us any good in this current economic climate. There'd be the necessity that the contractor performing the work on the project is a North Carolina-based contractor. The 60% of the subcontractors on the project also be in North Carolina-based. 50% of the supplies and materials purchased would have to be purchased in North Carolina, and there could only be a maximum of five incentive plan certificates outstanding at any given time by any single applicant. How do you get with plan then? You would submit your regular building permit application for single-family residential structure or project at the planning department, at which time the applicant would receive a certificate for this incentive program with the checklist of the criteria that I just spoke about. Upon issuance of the certificate, they would then come in at the end of the project, certificate of occupancy, that the applicant would then come in at the end of the project and present the checklist, the supporting documentation to show that the criteria had been met, and if met, then would receive a refund of building permit fees within 30 days of that determination that the criteria had been met. And that basically is the program.
Seems simple enough.
Yeah, the whole idea is to try to encourage residential employment of in-house persons that are out of work. This could include roofing work, putting cabs, doing bulketing work, and so we limited it to, we felt the best thing to do was limit it to commercial. The question was asked, I had a couple builders ask me, well, what if it's a $500, $600,000 house? And we decided that probably we should limit it to $250,000 because of the board's interest in trying to stimulate affordable housing, which would be $250,000 or less, and that this also may encourage a lot of refurbishing work and people to work on houses that they're purchasing on the market that have gone through foreclosures, allowing them to go ahead and put somebody to work now to refurbish those houses so they can save, I think the estimate was between $500 and $1,200 would be the savings on the project. And the other impetus was that this be North Carolina licensed contractors, local subcontractors as much as possible, and that the building materials be purchased in North Carolina. Again, our governor has gone through a similar program in this on statewide basis, although we had the idea first, as the chairman pointed out to me earlier. But I'm, I hope it works. We have no idea. I have received favorable comments from about half a dozen builders that I've talked to about it from the Point to Moyoc, and as we saw this past week in the groundbreaking of two commercial projects that will employ approximately 100 people in this county, things do look, are starting to look a little bit brighter in Currituck County, and I solicit the board's support in this program.
Any further discussion? Questions from the board?
I just have one question. Are we going to revisit this again within?
Well, let me point out that the resolution does call for the program to end 12 months from today if it is adopted today. So it would have to be revisited if you intended to extend it beyond a 12-month period of time.
Are the forms already ready? I mean, we've got all that?
Well, I'm going to double-check the building certificates off. They're going to be handling that aspect of it, but we will get on that first thing in the morning and make sure that they're up and ready to go should the person's coming to the door.
I think it's important that records be kept to let us know periodically what's going on with it.
Exactly.
So that we know, so that we can measure against what's been going on versus what's going on now after its adoption.
I have one question. How long is a building permit valid for?
A building permit, if I recall...
One year.
One year.
One year. As long as there's activity occurring, it stays active, but it's valid for one year.
But don't forget the recent statute that extends building permits beyond one year, passed by the General Assembly.
Two now, I think.
But that, again, is a point of having the criteria that it must be, the project must begin within 30 days and have this first inspection within 30 days of issuance of the building permit, so it is not just held out there and doesn't really do much good or is intent to put people to work and to get some money flowing through the economy.
And the other criteria, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. McCray, is that we're offering this for one year, so the offer, the offers will expire on March the 1st next year.
Right.
That's fair.
Any other questions? Hearing none, I think it's appropriate for a motion.
So move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion from Commissioner Nelms, second from Commissioner Etheridge. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Item 10, consideration of modified golf cart ordinance.
Mr. Chairman, this has been before you in several different versions over the last couple of months, but I'll get right to what is the difference between this version and the last one that came before you. If you go to the second page, line five, and how is Section 1266 designation of public streets for operation of golf carts, as, I guess presented to me by some commissioners, and in fact, to discuss at your last meeting, there was a belief that perhaps it would make sense to go ahead and delineate, but then the proposed ordinance, certain streets and roads, or portions of streets and roads in the county for which golf cart operations are being prohibited, and so that's what this does, is to now prohibit golf cart operation under the ordinance to all Highway 168, 158, NC State Highway 34, NC State Highway 12, Tolls Creek Road, and Poplar Branch Road. Other than that, a golf cart could be operated on any road within the county where speed limit is 35 miles per hour or less. Now, there is a further provision that's now been added that upon receipt of a petition signed by 67% of property owners within a certain area within the county, could be neighborhood, it could be another area, that golf cart use is not advisable or not desirable within that area as petition. Those petitions may come before this Board of Commissioners for an ordinance that would repeal the use of golf carts within that particular neighborhood or area of the county. Going on down to, on the same page, to line 17, under what would be entitled Section 12, dash 67, limitations of safety criteria, it would, again, provide that no golf cart can be driven across any road at an intersection where the road being crossed has a speed limit of more than 35 miles per hour, except for this now added language, except for the sole purpose of crossing such street in a perpendicular direction at the intersection of a through street or at a signalized location in accordance with the direction of the signal. That helps address some concern that persons would be able to get, for example, from 135 mile per hour road across at least maybe 158 just for that limited purpose of being able to continue traveling on to another street with a speed limit of no greater than 35 miles per hour. Continue on to the next page, down to line 29. This addresses a concern or interest in being able to utilize some utility trailer or ability to tow certain things with a golf cart. We had already suggested that a person not be able to use a golf cart to pull others on roller skates, skateboards, or bicycles, but this would allow, despite that prohibition, the ability of someone to use a golf cart to tow watercraft, utility carts, or utility trailers on the types of streets that golf carts could be operated on under this ordinance. But it would make clear, it would make clear that none of those utility carts or utility trailers could be occupied by persons while they're being towed by a golf cart. And that, Mr. Chairman, those are all the changes or modifications made since this was last before the board.
All right. Anybody have any questions of Mr. McCray? Hearing none, I'll ask for a motion.
A move to approve is modified.
Motion for approval.
Second.
Second from Mr. Nelms. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Item 11, recommendation of award for the Corolla-Greenway multi-use path project.
Mr. Chairman, this is a project that we have brought before the board, before the past. This has been out for bids. Now we're bringing the bids before you. You have a bid tabulation in your package. Staff is making a recommendation tonight for a award to the low bidder who is Barnhill Contracting. Again, this is for approximately about a mile-long multi-use path extended from the nature, the kind of estuarian property down through into the Heritage Park where the Whalehead Club is, and the low bid is an amount of $413,640. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
I have one question. Did y'all rectify the problem that DWQ was talking about, the coverage?
Yes, we did.
That's been rectified?
Yes, we did.
We didn't acquiesce and say, yeah, we're gonna, they come our way?
That's correct.
There you go, John. There's your one example.
I'll give credit to Ben and the planning staff. They worked very diligently. In fact, I think they went and met with the state agencies several times, but we were able to work our way through that, not show surf will be successful again, but we were successful on this time. I would like to bring to the board's attention, though, that this project is 50% funded by a grant. These bids, as you can, first of all, you can see the range of the bids that's in front of you. The low bid was well under what the engineers take off of the project was. We've actually have left grant money on the table. We're in the process of working with the granting agency to see if we can get additional approval to extend some additional bike path. If we're successful with that, we'll be bringing that back to you at a future date to see if we can do some additional length. The challenge with it is, is where we're ending up at the entrance to the Whalehead Club. We tie into Corolla Light, so there's, we don't need it right there, we need to go down a couple miles, and the grant has some language about continuity that we, so we just got to go back and take a look at, will they give us a waiver and allow us to go a couple miles down the road and infill probably another half mile, another mile.
The same people that put the access in for the earlier proposal ahead of us, and we got it lit.
Mr. Chairman? Good lord. I would suggest in this motion tonight that we go ahead and start talking to Corolla Light. I've had numerous conversations with Jack Haskell, who's head of their infrastructure committee. They're willing to work with the county and include Corolla Light's bike path in this, so we might be able to tie all of that together now if we go ahead and make a formal request to Corolla Light to do this.
We are working on it. They've actually have already sent us a couple options for our consideration whereby they will, one option would be to lead or to transfer the path to the county, one would be to allow us access to it and just contract back with them to maintain it, but they've actually put several options in front of us that we'll be bringing back to the board for consideration. We've also had similar conversations with Monterey Shores, and they've had, they've also been very receptive. Again, the goal is for the county ultimately to have a multi-use path all the way from the Derrick County line all the way up to the North Beach access ramp, and it looks like we're putting together pretty nicely.
All right, any further questions? Hearing none, we need a motion.
So moved.
Second motion from Commissioner Etheridge, second from Commissioner Nelms. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, like sign. Opposed, like sign. Item 12, appointment to library board of trustees, that would be you, Mr. Nelms.
Yes, I'd like to point Colleen Umflett of Grandy to the library board of trustees.
I have a motion for Ms. Umflett. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Next item is appointment to fire an EMS advisory board. I believe we have, Mr. Hugh McCain is, is up, Mike, or Mick Luzzinski, and?
Al Thalto and Stanley Griggs are all up. And I just wanted to bring something to the board's attention, this, the format you have in your agenda package is a little bit awkward. This board is, the way it was set up, did not fit nicely into what we have done with all of our advisory boards. This board actually has, I think it's five members that are appointed directly by Board of Commissioners. Three members are recommended from the volunteer fire departments, which they come in for, before the board and the board has to approve those. So, in your agenda package, although you see these five names associated with individual commissioners, there really is only five direct appointments by the Board of Commissioners to this advisory board.
And each of them is eligible for reappointment?
Yes, they are.
If no one objects, we can just move to reappoint all five of them?
Oh, second.
So be it.
I have a motion, a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Appointment to the senior center advisory board, let's see, that is Mr. Nelms.
Yeah, Rose Wright, Mr. Chairman.
Rose Wright. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Next is appointments to Whalehead Board of Trustees. Mr. Scanlon, you might want to just give a brief synopsis of what this is about.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, yeah. This is probably one of your last advisory boards that we have yet to bring back and forth, in front of the commissioners to put them under the same format that you've adopted for all your other boards whereby each commissioner has a unique distinct appointment to the advisory board. Right now, the Whalehead Trust is a 21-member body. I think the trust, as well as the commissioners, all are in agreement that the board is become cumbersome in just pure number, and there is an agreement that a lesser number probably would be more efficient operating. So, there, the consensus that has been reached between the trust and the Board of Commissioners is that we will adopt a 11-member board, seven members to be appointed in a fashion that we've done all of our other advisory boards, with each commissioner having a unique appointment, at which time those seven will converse with the commissioners and you'll appoint four additional members. The seven members initially appointed uniquely by each commissioner, it is a requirement that they live and reside in Currituck County. The four that can be appointed in collaboration with the original seven, there is no residency requirement with them. So, ultimately, we'll end up with 11-member board, a majority always maintained by Currituck County residency. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
I guess what I'll do is I'll ask each member to state the member they'd like to appoint and then we'll take them all as one motion. Mr. Idlet?
Yes, I'd like to appoint Cliff Scott.
Cliff Scott, Mr. Rohr.
Kimberly Hoy.
Mr. Nelms.
Mr. Gary McGee.
Owen Etheridge.
Ah, Jeanie Mags.
And Ms. Taylor.
Joshua Bass.
Mr. Gregory.
Mr. Travis Marsh.
And I'm going to point Bill Richardson. And the other four appointments, I guess we need to reach a consensus on those.
Yes, sir, the, well, the way that it was, it's, the way that had been discussed is tonight you'll appoint the, this slate.
And then next meeting we'll do the other four?
For, you'll have an opportunity to discuss with these seven members as well as with the other commissioners, and you'll come back at your next meeting with the last four.
Okay.
I, I mean, I have some names here that the people who have expressed a willingness to, to continue to serve that's either been on the board at some point in time or currently is on the board, I don't know how the board wants to do if they, if they want to entertain that.
Do they not have a meeting before our next meeting? They have a meeting before our next?
They have a meeting before our next meeting, so I think that would be the best procedure to follow.
Well, I'm, I'm going to, and Twitty because of her relationship with the Wild Horses and the synergy between them and the Whalehead Trust is one of them.
Buck Thornton.
Alan Ives.
Okay.
Has expressed a willingness to come back.
Less three. Is there more? What else you have on there?
That's, that's the only three that I had.
Less three. If, if the board agrees with those three, then we need another one.
And if, if the board don't, I mean, if you would rather, I'll take that back to them and confirm through the Whalehead Trust that these are people that they would like to see on there.
Do you have any objection with any of those? And we can just come back at the next meeting and appoint the last one.
Okay.
I move they be all accepted as presented.
A motion.
I'll second that.
Second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Item 16 is a consent agenda.
Move for approval.
Motion and a second for approval, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Item 17, commissioners' report. Mr. Gregory?
Chairman, I don't, I don't have any, Almore Sound Beach folks who spoke tonight, I, I am concerned that we try to staff meets with those folks and try to establish a service district of some kind back there. They need some help, they really do need some help. I've been back there, it's been a good while since I've been back there, but they, they've been living in bad conditions.
Back there last week, it's horrible.
It's bad conditions back there, it really is.
Mr. Etheridge?
Nothing to report.
Mr. Idlet?
Nothing.
Ms. Taylor?
Real quick, volunteer fire departments, I just wanted to give a big thanks to them. They met last Thursday and they have come together and brought their budgets in under the 5% that they were asked. They've got a couple things that they want to ask us to consider. I would like to ask that we be open-minded and listen, but I wanted to thank them for all their hard work. Also, Moyoc Volunteer Fire Department is going to have a fundraiser, I believe they're going to do it the second Saturday of each month, but the first one will be March 13th, it's at 8:00 a.m. at the fire station serving a pancake breakfast.
You'll buy my breakfast if I show up.
I might consider.
Mr. Nelms, you have anything?
Yes, Mr. Riddy and, maybe we can get Peter or somebody else involved in it, in talking with a lot of the teachers at Griggs this past week about a number of issues, they've requested that the county look into a bike path from Griggs Elementary School to the highway. And the reason for that is there is a tremendous number of kids that are using Poplar Branch Road. It is dangerous, as all of you that have traveled it have seen, there's nowhere for them to go, there's a ditch down there. And with the advent of the new McDonald's, of course, that's where they're going to flock, but there are a lot of children that live in the Steeplechase and the Waterview Shore subdivisions and interspaced up and down Poplar Branch Road, it's a little sparse, but a lot of those kids do travel from Griggs Elementary School and hopefully we can get a bike path through the county. But I think it would be good if we looked into servicing the mainland with some service also.
We had, we had talked with that, about that several years ago. As a matter of fact, we'd even talked to Senator Bassnight as part of the bridge project of having a bike path. You know, he's talked about the Mid-County Bridge is going to be bike friendly, well, it's going to be friendly from this side to, and over there, but on this side it's going to be very unfriendly. And it might be something we could certainly take up with, I know they have some grants and things available for that type of stuff, that maybe it's something we could take forward if we get the county manager to check into it, unless we have any objections.
Maybe Mark will have some money left over from the New Bonner Bridge.
There you go.
President Obama will go give it.
There you go. Mr. Rohr?
Uh, yeah, I'd like to express my appreciation for all the kind thoughts that, and well wishes that everybody made while I was out with my wife having surgery a couple of weeks ago. Everything seems to be going real well, so I appreciate your thoughts. I wanted to remind everybody too, this Saturday at the high school is the Business Expo put on by the Chamber of Commerce, 10 to 3. There will be a blood drive, there are blood mobiles, so everybody please show up because they're always needed that. And the following Saturday is the Currituck Arts Council, Art Extravaganza, at the same place, three, 10 to 3, and it's always a great event, so try to turn out and support our local artists for that as well.
All right, and I got her already. I just want to make a comment that the Idlet Road, the state is going in there and it looks like they're just carving the shoulders right off next to the road and then they're backfilling it and they're trying to do something with the Idlet Road. And I'm very appreciative of what they're doing in Idlet and Water Lily Road still falling into sound.
Yeah, I've been on the same thing there over Knights Island two days this week and done a lot of road patching and that type of stuff as well, so I'm very appreciative of it.
Let me say something to that, road patching. I came back from the western part of the state today and you don't have any potholes until you get to about Windsor this way. Everything to Raleigh, where there is one little section of 64 west of Williamson, but everything from Rocky Mount past Winston-Salem is fixed.
Good shape.
Yeah.
Even down to Raleigh by the Governor's Mansion, always shake your teeth out to drive through there?
They haven't got to us yet. Did you have something, Mr. Gregory?
Well, the Lions Club, they've got the pancake breakfast, you know, Saturday morning too. You can leave there and you can go right down to the Business Expo.
And then the Hunter's Feast.
You come to the Hunter's Feast, have a cool night for that.
Mr. Chairman, that raises a good point. Is there any way we could, during these meetings beforehand, have a community calendar listing of upcoming events over the next two weeks?
If there's some way the staff can know what the upcoming events are, we certainly could scroll it at the beginning of the meetings.
We need a good newspaper in this county. They can give you those, call it a calendar.
I think it's time to move on to Mr. Scanlon.
You're out of order.
Let me save Mr. Rohr and Mr. Scanlon, you have anything to report?
Just a quick reminder that folks should be looking for the census information to be coming to their houses sometime in March. The Census Bureau, it will be holding office hours in our public library at Barco. They'll probably start operating there maybe mid-March for anybody that needs assistance in filling out the census information. It's important for our folks to get the information, to fill it out and return it. That certainly impacts our allocation of federal funds, so they should be on the lookout for that information the month of March.
This, this dog's count, I just registered mine as a Republican, so I just want to make sure I get them on there.
Anything else? Hearing nothing else, ask for a motion to adjourn.
Please.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.